Welcome to the Aletha Board of Education Meeting.
Hi, we are the Student Council members of Briarwood Elementary School.
At Briarwood, we believe in treating others with respect and doing our best.
Go Bears!
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Aletha Board of Education to order for the month of August 2007 and ask Mrs. Carpenter if she will please call the roll.
Ms. Ashley here. Mr. Churchman?
Here.
Dr. Daniels?
Here.
Mr. Gilmore?
Here.
Mr. Parker?
Here.
Mr. Poland?
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Here.
And we have a quorum to conduct our business tonight. With that, we'll turn to the Pledge of Allegiance. And Dr. All, would you please make the introductions here?
Yes, we have a little change this evening because we have our opportunity to have a scouting group here to bring in the colors for us as part of our Pledge of Allegiance. And they are from Weblo Pack 3288. That's Nathaniel Lux, and he's a Happy Elementary student. And Brian Carter is a first class scout from Scout Pack T-83 and a Chisholm Trail Elementary student. And they're accompanied by Jason Nolan, Assistant Director of Field Service for the Boy Scouts of America. And so, we're very honored to have two of our students to bring in the colors tonight. And then, following that, I will have four students come up to help lead us in the pledge. So, please. We'd like, at this point, for the Reeves students to come forward. And they're going to lead us in the pledge. And following the pledge, I will tell you a little bit more about each of them.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Why don't you come on over here? And let's start with you. And you're Brian Carter, okay? And Nathaniel, you come on over too, so we can make sure. So, Brian was one of our students, and he is the first class scout, and he's at Chisholm Trail. And I believe you have a family member with you. Would you introduce your family member, Brian?
I came here with my grandma.
You want to give her name?
Her name's Marlene.
Okay. Marlene? And Marlene is also, works with the Chamber of Commerce here, and I've known Marlene for a long time. So, thank you, Marlene, for bringing him. Okay? And Nathaniel? Nathan? Okay, I'm sorry. You know, they put down your full name here, and I should know better. I should have asked you. Okay, Nathan, okay. And do you have any family members with you tonight? Would you like to introduce them, please?
Diane Lux, Marissa Lux, and Austin Lux.
Would they please stand? And Jason Nolan, would you please stand? And I would... We have a longstanding partnership with the Boy Scouts. They help in the character development and in the service to our students and community, and have for many years. And Jason and I have had an opportunity to get acquainted. And so, we appreciate that opportunity to both work in partnership to help develop future citizens. So, thank you very much for making sure that young men got here tonight. Okay, let's introduce this group right here. Okay, we may start from the oldest to the youngest. And if you want to come over a little closer, okay? So, the first one is Kennedy. Okay, let's come up here. Kennedy is a seventh grade student at Chisholm Trail Junior High who enjoys playing volleyball, softball, going to the pool, and you might want to look at their faces today, because you can tell, and hanging out with friends. And then, right behind her, Molly. And Molly's a fifth grader at Sunnyside, and she loves school and pitching for the sluggers, okay? Did I get that right? And she spends her free time reading or with her friends. And then, they have another sibling here, Cooper. This is Cooper, and he's a third grader at Sunnyside. And if it involves using a ball, Cooper loves to do it. For Cooper, there is no off-season. That's what it says here. Okay, I'll have you step back. And then, Max. Max will be in kindergarten at Sunnyside, and he's anxiously awaiting the start of the school year and can't wait to be a...
Kindergartner?
Mm-hmm. And a yellow jacket?
Yeah.
And a yellow jacket.
That's right. And Max enjoys baseball, and is also quite a fish in the pool. These four children are the two sons and two daughters of Tim Reeves, who's our principal at Heritage Elementary. Put the mic back up. These are the children of Tim Reeves, who's the principal at Heritage. And who else do you have with you today? You want to say that, Molly?
I have my dad, Tim, my mom, Marcia, and my grandma, Patty.
And Patty Reeves is also a staff member with us in the school district. And I think I had the pleasure of maybe hiring you many years ago to Aletha South, didn't I? Okay. So, thank you very much. And they're very eager to start school, so they represent us well. Thank you.
Our thanks to all of you students for helping us out tonight in this summer vacation time. We really appreciate that. Next, we'll move on to an oath of office. Last month, those of us who have been re-elected to office or newly elected to office for another term were sworn in, and Mrs. Wilhelm was unable to be here, so we'd like to take that opportunity tonight. Mrs. Wilhelm, if you'll stand, the clerk will read your oath.
Mrs. Wilhelm, do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Kansas and faithfully discharge the duties as a member of the Board of Education Unified School District 233, so help you God?
Thank you, Mrs. Wilhelm. Dr. All, would you please present us with an overview of our meeting agenda this evening?
Yes. First of all, we will begin with an introduction of new principals and assistant principals for the school district. And we have many of them here tonight, and I'll come right back and do that after we get through the agenda. Following that, we have several presentations tonight. One is a Strategic Planning Process update in helping us in our continuous improvement work. There will be some preliminary student learning results that Dr. Benikowski and Mary Mathieu will share. We have a follow-up discussion tonight on the designation of the official newspaper. There will be recognitions and awards as usual tonight, including recognizing the Boy Scouts of America as a district partner later. And then, following recognitions and awards, we will have public comments at about 7:00 PM. Following public comments, we have an action consent agenda. These are items that represent matters the board may approve without detailed discussion, and any item on the agenda may be removed for separate discussion as an action item upon the request of the superintendent or any board member. And the board has received supporting information to all of these items prior to the meeting. And separate action items tonight, the board will take action on bids, contracts, and agreements, which will be identified later. There also will be discussion and action on the notice of hearing for our budget development process. Following that, there will be action on certificated employee compensation. The board will also take a look at an athletic trainer agreement with the Aletha Medical Center. In addition, there will be, there is a benefit district petition for action for the Woodland Road improvements, as well as an additional action item on the construction of a Street 115th Street Terrace at Woodland Road. The board will appoint a representative for KSB, Governmental Relations Network, and also to the nominating committee tonight. The board will take action to set some upcoming special meetings, including the public hearing for 2007 and adopting the budget, and that will take place later tonight. And finally, among action items, the board will discuss a possible LOB authority increase to be placed on the ballot. And following that, there are a variety of future action items that the board will consider in the future in written reports, including summer school updates and others that the board has received. Following those agenda items, the board will adjourn to executive session, and the reasons for that will be identified by the president of the board at that time. At this time, I'd like our new principals and assistant principals come forward. This is an opportunity, and I'll call you by name, and so you can kind of come up. The board will kind of put a name and a face together, and like you to stand up here. And you can come and start with perhaps Mrs. Wilhelm, and come down the line and shake hands, and so they can make a connection. And then, we'll stay up here for a minute. Lynn Ann Bochers, she's going to be the principal at Walnut Grove Elementary School. And she's coming forward right now. And we have an opportunity to bring, you know, an excellent group of new principals and assistant principals to this district. Kristy Gotzchak is principal at Washington Elementary School. Kristy's been an IRT for us before. Lynn comes from another school district prior to moving to the Kansas City area. Carrie Lane, principal at Santa Fe Trail Junior High. Carrie was formerly assistant principal at North and Santa Fe Trail. She's actually a former student of ours and mine. She graduated from Aletha South, so is long-standing Alethian. Julie Richards, principal Briarwood Elementary School. Julie came to us most recently from North Kansas City, and a part of that, she was in the Shawnee Mission School District. Craig Taylor. Craig Taylor is assistant principal at Prairie Trail Junior High School. Craig formerly was teaching at Aletha East High School for us, served in a variety of leadership capacities. And he's a former student of mine as well. So, I don't know if that's a path succession planning. Is that part... Ruth Ann Wagner. I don't know if Ruth's here tonight. I think many of you know her. She's been the intern at Heatherstone Elementary School and has been a longstanding faculty member in this district, and she will be principal at Heatherstone. Mike Wolgast. Mike is assistant principal at Aletha North this year. Mike, most recently, was assistant principal at Shawnee Mission East High School. So, we were able to get him here in Aletha. Think he's a resident here already, and so, we're proud to have him. And finally, Brett Jaeger. Brett is principal at Fairview Elementary School. Brett, most recently, was equivalent, I think, to our instructional resource teacher role in the Blue Valley School District. And we have an opportunity to bring him to Aletha as well. And I believe Brent is also residing here in Aletha most recently. So, that's a new team that we have to lead our high-performing schools, and I'd like you to all welcome them. Thank you very much. And I know we had enrollment this week, and they're all trying to get up to speed. So, I have told them that once they went through introductions tonight, if they would like to leave to go on to do their duties, that they were more than welcome to do that.
Thank you, Dr. All. Can you all hear me in the back of the room? Is this microphone working? It sounds like we're having technology issues here tonight. Hopefully, they're working on that. As we move into information presentations, which is section two of our agenda, item 2.01 deals with our Strategic Planning Process Update, and Dr. Bev Graham is going to present this. Welcome, Dr. Graham.
Okay, well, my objective tonight is...is this one on? Okay, it's not on. I'll talk loud. My objective tonight is to update you on our scheduled review process for the District's Continuous Improvement Plan for the '07-'08 school year. As you know, this has been a work-in-process. Seeing the big picture on a district of this size is, gets pretty complex and takes some time. Rest assured that we are not the only school district that's working toward this. In fact, three weeks ago, an article in Education Weekly talked about it. It's this big initiative from Harvard University. And they are working with the Harvard Business Graduate School of Education, and the Harvard Business School are partnering on a multi-year collaborative project with nine school districts. And they're working to understand how more fully effective leadership and management practices in the business and nonprofit sector can be brought over to school districts. Their biggest strategy is called cohesion. And a cohesive school is one that the intentional integration of all elements of a school system are integrated in order to execute a district-wide improvement strategy. Sounds pretty familiar. So, we are definitely on the right track. So, to start with, I just wanted to update and just kind of review where we've been and what milestones that we've accomplished so far in our road toward continuous improvement. There are some significant steps that have been accomplished to date, including coming to consensus just regarding our terminology. We're on the same page now on using our terminology. We've identified performance measures and gathered historical data on those performance measures. We've found industry benchmarks, so we know what our numbers actually mean and where we stand on progress. We've developed a preliminary balance scorecard, and you saw that in July of 2006, and what that looked like. We reviewed and revised our goals and objectives for the '07-'08 plan, which began as of July 1. We've deployed our strategies, meaning we've assigned divisions or cross-divisional teams to work on each of the hundred, almost close to 100 strategies we have in our Continuous Improvement Plan. Not only that, but we're documenting concrete steps, roles, and responsibilities, and timelines on those action, written action plans, on how things are going to happen throughout this year to meet our goals. We took those 99-plus action plans and then have realigned the balance scorecard and our continuous improvement measures, so that our plan matches up. Terminology-wise, just as a reminder, we all know that any strategic plan starts with the mission of the district. The strategic directives are pretty much the why of the plan set by the Board of Education. Those five strategic directives break down into goals. In the '07-'08 plan, we have five goals that have been identified. The objectives tell us of the how of what we're going to do. We have over 21 objectives in the current plan. And then, the strategies. That's the written action plan, the who, when, and where, and what's going to happen, and who's going to do it. As I said, we have close to 100 of those in our current plan. If you think of this as a drill-down, when you start from the mission, as you go down to each level of the plan, it becomes more and more specific and more measurable of how we're going to make progress. Roles and responsibilities, just as an overview. The Board of Education, of course, sets the strategic direction, the five directions that really are the, really set and align the entire plan. Anything underneath those directions have to, of course, align with those five directions. The board also will have a chance this year to monitor the progress and results on an ongoing schedule of the balance scorecard and the strategic plan. I'm going to tell you what our schedule, proposal schedule is here in a minute. Senior leadership then developed those goals underneath the strategic directions. They further worked with staff to develop objectives. Those objectives were assigned to a division staff member or a cross-divisional team who developed with their division a strategy. That strategy breaks down into a written action plan. They then goes in over to the larger plan. The last part of that is the results, that "so what" question, did we make any changes? And that's where those performance measures come about on the balance scorecard. There's two tracking tools that you're going to see a lot this year. One is the Continuous Improvement Plan worksheet, which we gave you an example of that in your handouts today. That's the big picture. That aligns everything, the goals, the strategies, what are our implementation measures, how do we know if what we said is happening, is happening on an ongoing basis, and what lines up with those performance...oh, there we go. What lines up with those performance measures? The performance measures are on the balance scorecard. You're going to see that throughout the year, too. It's a pretty big document, so we're talking about how we can break that out, so that we can communicate and have time to look at it. So, just to give you an overview of what you're looking at, when you look at that Continuous Improvement Plan worksheet, you see the structure that we've been talking about. Everything starts with a strategic directive, breaks down into a goal, breaks down further to an objective, and that objective breaks down into a specific strategy. That strategy has someone assigned to it. We're tracking, do we have that action plan, written action plan on file? They also then have identified process measures. As you say, you're going to do this, how are we going to know that it's done? How many times is it going to happen? When is it going to happen? Where is it going to happen? Last but not least, then, we've aligned it with the balance scorecard measures. We're looking at that causal effect. If we do these things, then would we expect these measures to change? So, this took a lot of work from the staff to figure that out and figure out which of those performance measures, we've got a lot of them on there, but what am I doing that's going to, that may affect those changes? The balance scorecard that you'll see starting next month also then takes from that Continuous Improvement Plan worksheet. It takes those measures now and aligns them back up under our same format of direction, goal, objective, and then matches them up. It gives us a historical perspective on those measures. It gives us benchmarks. In other words, how do we compare to other local or benchmark districts? It also, last but not least, with any strategic plan, you know you're on your way when you get to that target and timeline statement. By what do we expect to change and by how much? Now, what I think makes our plan unique, and I think that we're meeting that, we're reaching, and we're getting close to that cohesiveness strategy that Harvard's talking about, what really makes us different is now we've actually are able to align our strategies with each of those performance measures. So, if you want to know what are we doing differently in '07-'08 to affect the number and percentage of schools that make standard of excellence on reading, we can go back and say, well, these are the things that we're attributing to this and what we think will help that change. Now, does that mean that's all we're doing? Oh, no. We're still doing everything we've always done. But it does tell us what we're doing differently this year, because we know the old adage, if you do the same thing, you better expect the same results. So, this tells us, we're doing this, we're doing the things we've always done, but we're doing something, and we're enhancing something different to see how that's going to work. I think that alignment will really help us all be on the same page of understanding how our strategy is aligned. So, when will you see it? Well, we took a look at the balance scorecard, which is many, many pages, and the, close to 100 actions, and figured out, how could we communicate this on an ongoing basis internally and externally, so we're all on the same page of understanding where we're at? So, it gives time to discuss it, to review it, to look at our targets and say, is that where we want to be, and is that where it's at? So, we developed a year-long calendar. And that year-long calendar takes those five strategic directives and breaks them down by month. It goes through our internal quality council. Will they look at the whole plan? They look at the balance scorecard. They make recommendations. It then goes up to our senior leadership team, who then takes the recommendations from the quality council, listens to those, and then brings that then in front of the Board of Education. So, you'll see each of the strategic directives. You'll see the continuous improvement plans around those. You'll hear about the innovative strategies that we're doing under each of those directives. And last but not least, you'll see the balance scorecard measures, how they align, and what we've set for targets for change. So, it's a year-long calendar that I think will be productive in breaking this apart, so that we can all communicate and understand it. Now, last but not least, we always look for that Baldridge criteria, and a Baldridge organization focuses on the future, not just this year, but next year. So, what we did is we looked at that calendar this year and said, could we just repeat this? Could this be a cyclical calendar? So, we start the beginning of the school year and work through the strategic plan. We work through the balance scorecard. And by the time we get to June in 2008, we're going to be ready for the '08-'09 plan. We're going to have made adjustments. We're going to have discussed it. We're going to have looked at targets. And so, this could be an ongoing process that we put in place that could be repeatable and allow us to have a strategic planning process that's effective. I think I can speak for everyone that we're looking forward to working together this year and sharing our strategies and looking at measures and figuring where we're at in our progress for achieving excellence across the district. Are there any questions?
Dr. Graham, okay, microphones are on, everybody. First off, I want to compliment you and the team for the job that you've done. The evolution of this is absolutely outstanding, aligning it with the balance scorecard and getting the goals the same. That's excellent. The question that I have is on the action plans that are on file, is there a way to electronically post those, so that anybody, even the board, could go out and review those and study those if desired at any time?
I think it's something that we could discuss. It's definitely a possibility. There's 100 of them. So, but I think that's something to get discussed with Dr. All.
And even if we could put the Continuous Improvement Worksheet out there or the balance scorecard some way, just to go in and touch on the link associated with the objective and be able to review that?
Absolutely.
This is outstanding work. I compliment you on it.
One thing that I think would be a helpful part of this process, if you look at that schedule, and we start September with student learning. So, if we could bring that first cycle to you and have you actually focus on the action plans, and because there might be some things that we need to adjust or tweak or explain, and remember, we're going through this for the first time, so it's not perfect. Nearly perfect, right? And then, once we got through that board meeting, then we would have a public document that the boards touched and whatever, and then we would post that out. And then, we would do that chunk by chunk. And by the end of the year, we would be ready to say, okay, this is the history of 2007-'08. Then, as we get ready for '08-'09, we again are prepared or ready. It's getting this cycle. And I'll tell you, Bev has been very adamant that we not have a strategic plan that's just in a notebook on the shelf, that it gets integrated into the way we do our regular work. And we think the schedule for next year will integrate the board into this, because I know that some of you would have different areas here that you might want to see more detailed than others. And so, this will allow that to happen. And by all means, you will see it improve over a period of time. But I think we've finally hammered out a model that we can live with as a senior leadership team. We're also working together for a half-day later this month, the senior leadership team, and really, again, working, our focus is going to be on the strategic planning, continuous improvement process as we get ready for this year.
Dr. Graham, we have been talking about applying for the Baldridge Award for a number of years. In your professional opinion, how far do you think we are from being able to actually make a good run at that?
I think we're making great progress. I think the hard part of being close to Baldridge level is becoming really data-driven, and we're really making decisions off that data. So, this process will get us a whole lot closer to being able to say that we are using this on an ongoing basis.
Didn't answer my question.
She's uncomfortable answering that question, because we've been having some discussions about this. And, you know, there's pluses and minuses about making the application. The application, you know, we've made those in the past. And when I became superintendent, we decided to suspend that for a couple of years, because we had some alignment issues system-wise to deal with. And rather than putting energy into the application process, which was very helpful to begin with, because we got feedback, and it wasn't all positive. And it showed us where our processes were very weak. And so, that's part of what we call opportunities for improvement, OFIs. We've been dealing with some OFIs. And in doing that, that's what Bev's and we have been working on for a really good year and a half now. And as we discussed, we'll wait until after this senior leadership team, see how we come forward with a couple of these sessions with the board. And I think we'll be in a better place to answer that question. It might be this year. I think definitely by '08-'09, we are ready to go.
One other question for student learning, kind of the student learning department as such. Knowing that that is a major focus for us being here and for our students, is there a reason, or would there be a look at not just September, but perhaps revisiting in January again? I know a lot of our statistics and data come from our state assessments, but is there a reason to revisit that as far as board report out again in January or February for a continuous update?
I actually think that you'll hear from the Teaching and Learning Department related to student learning results throughout the year. We have new initiatives that we need to bring you up to date on and what the results are there. Our results, as you will hear in just a few moments from Ms. Matthews and myself, there's timelines where different data pieces are coming along, and so, we'll need to report those out to you, whether they're verbally reported at the board or through written reports. I think that will actually be continuously throughout the year. So, that I don't think we can do it just once. We're going to give you an overview in September of some of the areas that we're working on. It should kind of give you the big picture, pieces of the balance scorecard, but then we'll be providing you data throughout. And some of our annual measures are periodically coming out, and we wouldn't want to wait till, just do it in September and then want, wait till next
till, just do it in September and then want, wait till next September to do that.
And it will be related to the balanced scorecard again as you go throughout, I know that you report out each on many of the initiatives.
And certainly some are on the big balanced scorecards and some are more the measurement, benchmark measurements that we use to look at our ongoing strategic initiative. For example, in the area of pre-algebra for sixth grade, we have data points that we're looking at internally that make a decision on, you know, how many students have enrolled, how many sites do we have, what does the increase, how are the students doing on some of their testing? So we keep those data points, but we'll also be bringing some to the board to give you the big picture, we're moving on some initiatives.
And will you again reference the initiatives? I know you said 100, reference some of those initiatives as you got eight. For me, it would just help to align as we get more familiar with it.
Oh, definitely. We'll probably reference off of the teaching and learning ones, of which there are, I believe, 41. We're actually going through a little bit of our process in my department right now. We're realigning and making a few changes in some of those 41. But yes, we will reference that at all times.
Thank you.
We carry that sheet with us at all times.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Banikowski, one other point, as I look on the sheet here, and it addresses the important issue of early childhood development, the one aspect that I'm unclear on is how we're going to be measuring and monitoring the space needs to accommodate that. And I don't know if that's embedded in the growth area or if it would make sense to have a separate line item under the early childhood development section.
Actually, that would probably, space-related issues, probably a little bit more under the operations side. We are looking more at how many students we're involving, what our increase is, maybe if there's a particular type of student that we're receiving that we need more training on, how their results are doing on their individual education plans. So those are more the aspects we're looking under at student learning. But as you will notice, with most pieces of the balance, of the strategic plan, we touch each other. It's hard to talk about just one area, it also has an impact on another area, has an impact on business and finance, on operations. So I think you'll constantly hear that there's kind of a, I always call it the Jell-O effect. You touch one piece of Cuba Jell-O and it makes the other wiggle. So we have certainly a lot of interrelationships on our strategic planning.
Hey, thank you very much. Board members, I meant to mention something before we started down the agenda. We have a couple of items we're going to move on the agenda till after the executive session because some of them involves consulting with our attorney on those, and that would be 2.03, which is the presentation on official newspaper, the update on that issue, and then items 7.04 and 7.05, which relate to benefit districts and the contract related to the improvements of a street and construction of the street at 115 Tarrasen Woodland. So we're going to defer those till after executive session. With that, we'll move on to 2.02, and Dr. Banikowski and Ms. Matthews are here about student learning results.
We're very pleased to bring to you just a little bit, a little brief report on student update, on some learning results. We're going to really talk about two areas. We're going to talk about a little piece of new data and as well as we're going to give you a timeline on some other pieces of data that will be coming to you over the more recent amount of time in the next couple of months. As Dr. Graham has just talked about, everything that we talk about relates to our strategic directions and our strategic plan. And we're, of course, focusing at this moment on your, number one, at least in the listing, student learning and one of our high priorities certainly as an organization, as a district. Everything starts in a sense with that strategic direction, that goal, student learning, continuous improvement for, and learning and achievement for all students. One of the areas that, and I don't expect you to read this, but you've had this sheet of paper before, it is kind of our little bible, if you will, in teaching and learning that focuses on some of the initiative areas and high priority areas that we're working on the strategic plan. You see it in the strategic plan form, in teaching and learning, we needed to have it on the front back sheet. So that's really our goals that we're working on. And as Dr. Graham said, we're working on many other things that are just part of the nature of the business, but these are some of the areas that we are focusing on. Of course, on your balanced scorecard, the same as we have in teaching and learning, and we contribute to the district balanced scorecard, we're looking at some of those critical benchmark pieces, we're going to talk about a few of those this evening, that provides us that year-to-year comparison. Of course, from a teaching, learning perspective, we always remember it is not the benchmark that we're working toward, it is actually the goal. Whereas, we're going to share with you some reading data, that's not the ultimate goal of that score. Our ultimate goal, of course, is for children to learn to read and to be able to read proficiently. We have certain measures that give us some indication of that, we are going to share with you just one of those measures this evening. So again, we start there, the strategic plan gives us that whole piece that we're working on. Right now, Ms. Matthews is going to talk a little bit about one piece of data we wanted to update you, we actually promised we would update you about, and that is our grade-two reading assessment results.
You may recall last year when we talked a little bit about the grade-two student learning results. The grade-two assessment is administered both fall and spring. In the fall, it's administered as part of a requirement for the state of Kansas. In the spring, we administer it again as a post-test to make sure that student growth has occurred. It is an individual, one-on-one administration with kids. So a teacher sits, listens to the student read, assesses their phonics, their fluency, kinds of things, and also comprehension. You may recall in the fall, 87.6% of our second graders were reading on or above grade level, which is a great feat, but it's not where we want our kids to be. I'm going to share with you our results for this spring and give you kind of just a little glimmer. As you look, you can see that in our most recent results that we ran from the end of the year, 96.3% of our second graders are reading on or above grade level. As we analyzed the students who are not reading on grade level, a large percentage of those students were ELL students, a large percentage of those students were also students who were new to us. As we looked at data, we found that students who were with us longer tended to score better than students who had just been with us a year. And so as we looked even at where we've come from to where we are now, if you look at, starting in the year 2000, 2001, when we began reporting and collecting this information, I think there's a couple of pieces of data that I want you to really focus on. In the 2000, 2001 school year, you'll see that at the beginning of the year, only 71% of our kids were reading on grade level or above. Means there were 30% of those kids who weren't. If you look at that number today, we've made growth in our fall comparison, and then you'll also see even in our spring comparison. For the last five years, we have averaged a good improvement in our spring results with 95% or better of the kids scoring on or above grade level. So as you kind of take a peek at this and looking at just our most current results, the thing I want to show you for that spring, when you think about the number of kids that are reading on or above grade level, that's over 1,800 kids. So that's a lot of kids we've impacted. It's about 70-some kids that aren't reading on grade level. So those are kids we still have to keep looking at, and those are kids that we have to continue to monitor. We believe that our results are contributed to several things. One, our curriculum is aligned, we believe that that is extremely important. We also believe that our kindergarten and first-grade programs have a good, strong foundation in the area of reading, and it allows that strong focus allows for those grade-two students to be successful. You'll also see listed on the screen several things that we have implemented. For example, early reading intervention programs in all of our building to really kind of attack right away the kiddos who don't have, that don't know their alphabet, that don't know their sounds, those kinds of things. You'll also see we have specialized programs at our Title I sites where students get reading programs. They also do things, for example, at Ridgeview Elementary this summer, they've been doing a, reading a tremendous readers program, and they meet out underneath the tree, and they have a whole bevy of books for kids, and the kids can come and all summer long have been able to get books, take a book home, read it, bring a book back, read again. So they've been tremendous readers. So it's been a great program. And I think all of those things in combination really helps our second-grade students and our primary students be successful and with this piece of data. I think too, as we look at our assessment timeline, we have more than just some grade-two data to talk to you about. You'll be receiving in the next few weeks, about the middle of August, we will receive our ACT scores. Those tend to come in about the 15th or 16th, they're embargoed until then, and we'll make sure that those get to you as well. Same with our SAT scores, they will be here late August to early September is about when they arrive. So those will be two other data points in terms of our balanced scorecard that we'll be bringing back to you to share. We also have the third area of assessment that we bring to you, and that has to do with our Kansas assessment. We know that we have Kansas assessments in reading and math, we also have them in writing science, social studies. Science, social studies will be a new assessment this year, so we'll talk about that at one point. But reading and math is probably where our focus has been because that also means AYP, and AYP being adequate yearly progress. And those results also impact AYP as well, but we also have attendance rates and graduation rates. So we will be bringing those forward to you as well. The place where we are currently with the Kansas assessment results, the data is preliminary. We have received preliminary results from the State Department at this point. We are currently in the process of reviewing and verifying our data. We have made some appeals on some of our data where we felt like there were errors and kids placed in the wrong spot, kind of a thing. So we are still finishing up that process and are darn close to being finished, but not quite yet. The other piece that we're waiting on is confirmation from the federal government that the AYP targets that were changed have been approved. That, the state is hoping will happen soon. A third piece that we'll bring to you in addition to the scores has to do with standard of excellence. Last year, they left standard of excellence in the same frame as it had been before based on the percentage of kids scoring in certain performance bands. They are currently reviewing how they determine standard of excellence. I have not yet received word on how they are changing it. I am serving on the state committee that is working on that, and I know that it is undergoing some change. Changes from, currently, we have grade-level standard of excellence and we have building standard of excellence. There is some talk about tying standard of excellence to AYP, and so until that's done, we're kind of in limbo at this point. Dr. B will share with you a little bit more about the official release.
We receive information from the Kansas State Department of Education, who is the holder of official data, that they will have certain points that they will be releasing data that is no longer preliminary to us in the school district. And I'm going to talk about three of those data points or timelines that the state has shared with us. The first one is on August 14th and 15th. They will be indicating across the state of Kansas, any Title I school that is on improvement. And again, they however, at that point, they're still basing that on preliminary data, and that's a requirement of the federal government to release the data at that time. The second piece that they will be releasing to us is on September 11th, 12th. All other schools identified as on improvement, that are not Title I schools, will be released across the state of Kansas. And then finally, in the middle of October, beginning, the card of October, middle of October, KSDE will release the results for all scores across all schools in the state of Kansas. Now, of course, from a teaching and learning perspective, we are data-driven, and we believe that having data, even at this point, if it's a little bit preliminary, we've got to think about that data because it might show some OFIs, as Dr. All called them, opportunities for improvement. It looks at some areas that we're doing very well in, it looks like some of the indicators, for example, in mathematics, these are going very well, we're teaching them very well, but we need some additional help or some lessons or some resources. So it is a little bit challenging to deal with preliminary data that, as Ms. Matthews says, has a tendency over the last couple of weeks to continue to change. We have students maybe in the wrong school, wrong district, wrong student group, which of course, then as data changes, that changes averages and comparisons. So we are dealing with that preliminary data. One of the things that we have looked at in our preliminary data that is not official yet is we think there's going to be some good news for us. We believe there's going to be some good news for us in the district related to AYP as a whole. Certainly, our attendance rate, which we have a lot of input that we put into that data for that, we believe is going to be strong, has been strong because kids seem to like to come to school here, and that's a very good sign. And then thirdly, our graduation rate, I think will be good news. We will also have some continued challenges, predominantly with certain student subgroups or what we call AYP groups. Some of those challenges that we've had in the past, we've talked about, and that are really partially related to the fact of the details and the way that No Child Left Behind is organized. So we will bring that information to you as well because that's important information for us as we're making progress. I do want to end while I say that we believe if the preliminary data holds, it does not change quantumly, though we have some good news, we also recognize that we cannot release anything, we have no official information yet from the State Department, and as that comes down, we'll be sharing that with you immediately, of course, so that you can have information as well as our community, our parents, our staff, because that's important data as we make decisions and we go forward. One of the things that you'll notice when I talk about our 41 student learning objectives, most people just start to glaze over. You know, the research on school improvement by building says, most schools can only focus on three goals at one time and make progress on those goals. So as I've been talking with principals, and they're trying to then convey to staff and the teaching, learning departments trying to convey, it's like, okay, can we take those 41 things we're working on and could we put into some kind of organization? So this is our first attempt to put it in a one graph with a very few little pieces to that graph. We believe that our major target that we're working on is excellence for all. And you know, those words hold a lot of power because we're talking excellence, we're talking all, we're talking student learning. We would say that one of the major areas that we are focusing on the district is academics. We are the only institution that focuses on academics. We have to determine what it is students need to know and to be able to do, and then we have to make sure we have the right curriculum, the right resources, the right teaching strategies to make that happen. We're focusing on two major areas and have been for several years. Number one is increasing rigor. We have many examples where we're trying to lift up students and to have them to experience things that they may not have thought they could do, but that they can do. Pre-algebra is one example. We certainly know we're starting AP Statistics for the first time offering that course this year. Two ways that we're lifting up students. In the area of reading in elementary, we're working on, working on high ability readers as well as those children who are challenged. The second area that we're working on is closing the achievement gap. We believe that we cannot just narrow that gap, we have to work very diligently, especially for our student groups that we've been recognized by standards and poor. Those students who are poor, those students who are Hispanic students and our African-American students are three groups that we need to continue to work on. We've made great progress, we've been recognized, but our goal actually is to close the achievement gap, not just narrow it. So that's one piece of the puzzle that we're working on. The second one is actually on connections. And sometimes people say, well, wait a minute, you're an educational institution, why are you talking about connections? We're talking about respectful, positive relationships. Because we know that if we have good relationships with students, parents, and our staff has good relationship with each other and with those other two groups, that we're going to improve academics, and that's student learning. We know that there is direct correlation between relationships, people that help to help, make you feel like you can do something, people that challenge you and encourage you to do that other step. So connections is very important to us. Many examples of parent initiatives, such as the Parents Leadership Group, other initiatives that we have going. Because ultimately, our goal is excellence for all students. So our 41 plans actually fit into these simple areas of academics and connections as we move forward with our challenges. We believe very much that we have to be in an aligned system if we are going to get to where we want to go, and those are very high expectations that we have for student learning in this district. So this gives you just a little brief overview of one student area of learning results, and that was in the area of reading for grade two. We will be bringing back to you some more information and just kind of the big overview picture in September related to that, as well as those other pieces of data that we talked to you about, ACT, SAT, and Kansas assessments and AYP that we will be bringing back to the board. So that gives you just our little overview part here. We would stand for any questions.
I have a question, and it may be related, maybe Ms. Matthews would like to answer. I'll leave that to you two to decide. When you're talking about looking at your preliminary AYP results and checking to see and commenting a student may be in the wrong group or in the wrong building, I'm assuming then what you're doing is reviewing and looking for outlier scores?
I wouldn't say necessarily outlier scores, we're looking for just inaccuracies. We're looking for Tommy Joe who really went to Abilene, the school district, and somehow their coding went incorrect, and that we need to give them back. Now, I jokingly always say we look at the score first and then determine if they really went for it, but we really don't. So it's pieces more like that, that we're looking for accuracy in the data because you're talking about a lot of data that in our district, our size, we manage, and then the state managing the whole state worth of data.
That was my assumption, which was why I was thinking outlier scores first as opposed to trying to go item by item. But my question is, who inputs where that, what group that student belongs to, what building that student is in, what grade that is in? Are those, so are those input errors on our side? Yeah, just.
I would say sometimes it's a combination of both. Our data is really fairly clean. All of our data uploads to what's now called the kid system, and the kid system is the Kansas identification system. What we find has happened, because as schools, districts, we code the AYP school, you'll all of a sudden have some school district who has all of a sudden have some school district who has entered it incorrectly. I've got this kid from Wichita I can't get rid of yet. I've been trying. He's not in ours, but they've coded him as one of ours, and I keep calling and saying, we don't know who this kid is. It shows his, you know, School of Residence is X, and that's in Wichita. We're here, get him out of our database. And so, it's some of those kinds of things. It's also just on our end, making sure that our own tags have been correct. We are very good, though. We start back in October after the September 1st deadline of, September 1st really is the official deadline. Any student who is here with us by September 1st counts, no matter what, and for student groups. And so, we're very diligent about taking, talking to schools and saying, here's your database, here are your kids you're going to test, here are the tags that go along with those kids, are those accurate? You know, when with human entry, there's always that option for error, but I would say, on our end, we're also very cautious in double and triple checking, because it is so important, so.
I just wanted to go back to the connections piece that you talked about, and if I could tie it back into what contributed to these positive results in the spring. I know that across our district, there are many parent nights for balanced literacy that are held, particularly with those kindergarten, first graders, and second graders. So, I know that there are many other things that you could have listed on here as something that was a positive impact on our students, but I'd be remiss in not mentioning that, because I know that's extra time that the teachers and that staff use to present to parents and to teach them how to present literacy and how to, what kinds of activities they can do in their homes to support learning for their students, so.
I'm thrilled that you would mention that. Our FLIP program, our Families Learning in Partnership, which was started by donation from Dr. Osborne, has been wonderful. We have great attendance. We have many schools that have now taken on their own FLIP and their own literacy nights. I know Mary Jo Fox, who is here tonight, is taking that over, and we're doing wonderful things, because we have to work in partnership with families and parents to get as much as we can out of students and let them experience all they can with the area of literacy and reading.
I just wanted to follow up with that as well, on that slide about what contributed to these positive results. I really think you should add a bullet point that says, I know we have all these wonderful strategies and teaching aligned curriculum, but ultimately, it takes a teacher.
Yes, it does.
A hard-working, dedicated teacher, and a parent, and probably a reading professional, and support staff that gave their personal best in order for this to happen. And from a board member's perspective, I don't want us to miss that, and I certainly appreciate it as well.
Yeah, very important. Actually, the thing that shows up in literature the most that makes a difference is the teacher. The teacher.
I had one other question that I forgot to ask earlier. You know, these results for these second graders are so impressive. For the benefit of those who will be watching us on TV this month, give me a rough estimate of how the percentage of time in a kindergarten and first grade classroom are spent on literacy. So, if you're averaging it out over the day, is it 75%? Is it 50%? Is it 25%?
Well, you know, off the top of my head, I would say there's nearly 75%. When you take off the fact that even what we're doing in mathematics, we're talking about literacy and building the language of mathematics. In science, we're talking, we're using literature as our basis to do that, and that's certainly not just the time I spend in a reading class, or in guided reading, or my reading instruction. So, I know that's high, but if you really look at it, literacy permeates so much of that primary classroom. Would anybody like to have a little better idea than that? Ms. Hermick or Ms. Fox, would you like to narrow my 75% down more realistic, but?
I think that's a really good, really good estimate.
What could she say?
Including the writing aspect, if you went to look at a literacy program that certainly incorporates writing.
Takes a lot to get these results.
And my follow-up to that is that if we're spending 75% of our time in kindergarten and first grade on literacy, and now online this year, we'll be adding science and social study assessments, so math, science, and social studies kind of gets crunched, or are we reducing, once we get past second grade, the amount of time we need to focus on literacy, knowing that hopefully, most kids have good, strong reading skills established?
I would say what we are trying to do at all grade levels, actually, at elementary, is that we are trying to focus the content area of science or social studies and doing it through a literacy approach, so that we're combining both. And certainly, as time goes on, and we're in fourth, fifth, sixth grade, we're spending more and more time in a concentrated, in that content area, but still reinforcing reading, because reading across the curriculum, it's how we learn is through reading in those content areas. So, it's marrying the discipline with the opportunity for reading and writing.
Dr. Van Akowski, we implement the testing in the fall as part of the state requirements, correct? Do we do the very same test in the spring, just as part of our local school improvement process?
Yes, we do the exact same assessment, and at mid-year, the teachers also do a quick check of where kids are performing. So, it's the exact same, but it's.
Prior to the state implementing that several years ago, were we doing that in the spring anyhow?
Yes.
I think it's a great thing, because we spend a little effort at second grade to make sure these kids are on solid ground going forward for the rest of their academic careers is important. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We are right at, just about at 6:30, which would be time for our comfort break. We'll break for 15 minutes and reconvene at 6:45. Okay, I'd like to call our meeting back to order. It's time in our agenda where we do recognition and awards, and I'll turn it over to Laura Lee. Welcome, Laura Lee.
Thank you. We'd like to extend a welcome to our special guests and our honorees, our business partners tonight, and I'm going to begin by asking Mr. Jim Smith, our Director of Community Development, to come forward for the business partner recognitions. As I call your name, I would ask that you come down the center aisle, up to the front of the room, and we're going to begin with the Olathe Noon and Santa Fe Rotary Clubs, David White, who is President of the Olathe Noon Rotary, and Dr. O.M. Elliott, President of the Santa Fe Trail Rotary, Kathy Mangino, our Extended Learning Facilitator, and Earl Martin, our Director of Elementary Education. Each year, the Olathe Rotary Club sell the Kansas City Stars on cold street corners early in the morning to raise funds for charitable donations. They designate half of the funds for a local charity, and chose this year to benefit SAIL, which is Olathe District Schools' Summer Adventures in Learning Summer School Program. David White is the owner of Fast Science Printing and current President of Olathe Noon Rotary, and Doc Elliott is a former Board of Education member and current President of Olathe Santa Fe Trail Rotary, and they are proud to present a check this evening for $2,680.48, and that will go to our Elementary Education Director, Earl Martin, and Ms. Kathy Mangino, who's our Extended Learning Facilitator. Our community partners continue to reach out and serve the children of Olathe, and we are extremely grateful and proud of these relationships, and thank the Rotary Clubs for their support. Please help us show our appreciation.
Hey, Doc, if you want to pull up a chair, we can probably find a spot for you over here.
We used to start at seven and be over by nine.
Let's keep something secret, Doc.
And thank you for those funds to help support summer school. There are many children who have benefited from that. Now, we would like to recognize Farmers Insurance Group, Mr. Brett Balkenbush and Ms. Ann Marston. The Farmers Insurance Group is the country's third-largest rider of homeowners and private passenger automobile insurance. Currently, Farmers is the largest private employer in Olathe with over 2,300 employees, two offices, and a third opening in October. They take seriously their responsibility to be good corporate citizens, and that is being evidenced in their partnering with Olathe District Schools. Brett has been with Farmers for 23 years and currently helps manage the call center here in Olathe. He and his wife Tracy have three sons in school at Olathe East and Pioneer Trail, and Tracy is a kindergarten teacher at Heatherstone Elementary. Ann Marston began her careers with Farmers in 2002 and is currently a claims supervisor. She and her husband Kevin have a son in school at Countryside Elementary and a daughter in high school. Farmers is supporting a backpack program for children in Olathe District Schools. This week, employees can buy stickers for $2 that allow them to wear jeans at work all week, and this is their Jeans for Backpacks fundraiser. They will also be having a Godfather's Pizza fundraiser on Friday with proceeds going to the backpack program. These are actually very successful fundraisers, because their goal and their expectation is to raise $5,000, which will cover the cost of purchasing all needed backpacks for elementary children in need in our district. This is a wonderful and creative example of how corporations can partner with our schools for the benefit of children. Congratulations and thank you. Now, we'd like to recognize the Heart of America Council, the Boy Scouts of America, Terri Miller, President, Carl Seaton, Executive Board Member, and Tim Bug, Scout Executive and CEO. This is a very special week in the world of Boy Scouts. August 1st marked the 100th anniversary of scouting in the world. Its purpose is educational, character-building, citizenship training, and personal fitness. In 2006, the Boy Scout Heart of America Council served more than 44,000 young people, of which 842 earned the Eagle Scout Award, their highest honor. Today, there are over 1,900 youth members within Olathe District Schools, served through Cub Scouts, Boy Scouts, and venturing, and more than 600 new scouts from Olathe are expected to join this fall. Eagle Scout Terri Miller is CEO and President of the Nationally Recognized HNTB Architecture. He has been dedicated to the scouting program since his youth and serves as President of the council. Carl Seaton, President of Seaton Van Lines and a longtime Olathe Community Leader, has been a member of the Boy Scouts of America almost his entire life. He's an Executive Board Member and is a recipient of the Silver Beaver Award, the highest honor that can be bestowed on an adult scout leader. Eagle Scout Tim Bug has served scouting as a professional for more than 30 years. He's been a Scout Executive and CEO in Georgia, Ohio, and Louisiana, and currently serves as Scout Executive and CEO in Kansas. Under his leadership, the Heart of America Council has experienced tremendous growth. The Boy Scouts of America is not new to Olathe, but this evening, on their anniversary, we have the opportunity to recognize the Heart of America Council for the many children they have served over the years and will continue to serve. We recognize them as a partner with Olathe District Schools and applaud them on their anniversary. Congratulations. We would like to recognize some other community volunteers who have done a tremendous job for our district. Robin Olson, Donna Massey, and Jeannie Matthews for the Summer Sack Lunch Program with Kathy Mangino, Director of the Elementary Summer School Program. Okay, which one are you?
I'm none of those.
Okay, what's your name?
Nancy Cornan.
Nancy Cornan, from Grace. Okay. Nancy represents the many, many volunteers and donors that support the Summer Sack Lunch Program. She works with Laura Murphy, who coordinates the lunch-making for Grace United Methodist Church, and those lunches go to the students at Fairview and Central Elementary. The volunteers at Aldersgate United Methodist Church make lunches that go to students at Westview Elementary, and the volunteers from St. Mark's Lutheran Church make lunches for the students at Ridgeview Elementary School. We're talking about a lot of lunches. At Grace, the volunteers put in close to 80 hours a week with donations of about $1,400 a week, providing 1,200 lunches, and I'm sure the same could be said of the programs at Aldersgate and St. Mark's. And I learned from Dr. All that one of our board members, Mr. Poland, is one of the volunteers who helps make the lunches. This year, the Grace United Methodist Women decided to take the program one step further and provided lunches the week after summer school was over, and next year, they hope to expand it into several weeks past summer school. So, please join me in applauding this caring and compassionate volunteer and those she represents. Ruth Nelson, our Assistant Director of Community Development, we would like to recognize you. Ruth has successfully been awarded the Sprint Achievement Program Grant, not on her own behalf. The Achievement Program provides grants for K-12 public school educators in the greater Kansas City area. They provide funds for programs in the classroom that contribute to student achievement, family engagement, and educator development. The grants range from $500 to $5,000, and we are happy to report that Ruth, who is Assistant Director of Community Development, applied for and was awarded a grant of almost the highest amount, $4,250, to provide funds for summer enrichment opportunities for English-language learners. Ruth said the idea came to her because of a conversation with an elementary teacher who said she wished some of her kids could have those same summer enhanced experiences at summer school. When the Sprint workshop came up, Ruth attended and took the initiative to apply for and win this grant. Congratulations to Ruth. And now Bob Courtney, our Energy Management Coordinator, with representatives from Arbor Creek, Bentwood, Heatherstone, Regency Place, and Sunnyside Elementary Schools. Please come forward. Bob is here to present the Special Energy Award to the representatives from these five elementary schools. Environmental Protection Agency promotes the Energy Star Program for products that operate efficiently, like washing machines, microwaves, and air conditioners, and buildings can also qualify for an Energy Star rating through their efficient operations. They qualify through efficient use of energy based on the age of the building, the hours of operation, the square footage, temperature and humidity, or humility, air quality, and analysis of the number of people using each different kind of space. I want to know who calculated these, Bob. Are you the mathematical genius who did this? These factors are accompanied by a monthly energy data over a year and a half time period. The staff at the building contribute to achieving this award by turning off lights in unoccupied spaces, keeping the outside doors closed, turning off computers at the end of the day, and promptly reporting dripping faucets or other needs. The district, through the Operations Service Center, assists in achieving this award by careful monitoring of energy use, choosing and installing efficient equipment, and routine maintenance of equipment. The high cost of energy makes this a timely award, and for the first time in our district, we are proud to recognize five Energy Star Award winners for conserving and efficiently using energy, Arbor Creek, Bentwood, Heatherstone, Regency Place, and Sunnyside Elementary Schools. Congratulations. And Bob says it takes a lot of energy to pick up those awards. They're really heavy.
At the beginning of the meeting, we introduced our new principals, assistant principals, and this is Ruth Wagner. Many of you know her, and she is the new principal at Heatherstone Elementary School, and she has been administrative intern there in the past. So, I just wanted you to know that she was participating here and didn't want to make that go unrecognized. Okay, thanks. Okay, thanks.
Now, we have a very special recognition. I'm going to ask Larry Spotts, the ONEA President, with Dr. Allison Banikowski, Associate Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, Ann Addison, Coordinator of New Educator Induction, Carolyn Good, Project Coordinator, and Kristy Leavings, NEA Executive Committee Member, to come forward for the NEA Saturn UAW Partnership Award recognition. While many school districts across the country face a teacher shortage, the Olathe School District and the Olathe National Education Association are working together to retain new teachers the district attracts and hires. And last year, I heard from our HR department, we had 4,300 applications for certified positions and hired about 250. So we have a tremendous pool. So I'm sure that they're choosing the best of the best. And once we get the best of the best, we want to do everything we can to help them and retain them. This collaborative effort has captured national praise and recognition. The National Education Association, Saturn Corporation, and the United Auto Workers selected Olathe District Schools and the Olathe NEA as one of six winners in the nation of the 2007 NEA Saturn UAW Partnership Awards for new teacher induction programs. The winners attended the awards presentation and celebration in June in Philadelphia, and they will participate in a day and a half visit to the General Motors and UAW Headquarters this fall in Detroit. Only six districts in the nation are selected for this award, and this is the second time our district has received it. The first time was in 1999. Since 2001, the teacher retention rate has reached an impressive 93%, and the number of Olathe Schools achieving the state standard of excellence rating in reading and math assessments has jumped from 27% to 81% in reading, and from 22% to 92.8% in math. So clearly, this program is making a difference. Congratulations to a great team. Our next recognition is actually for the district. I'm going to ask our Board President to come down here with Dr. All for the Expansion Management Gold Medal Award. The Olathe District has been designated a Gold Medal School District by Expansion Management Magazine in its annual education quotient issue. This is the highest award a district can achieve. To receive a gold medal, a school district must rank in the top 16% of more than 2,800 school districts rated across the nation on how well the district is preparing its students to be part of the workforce after graduation. So that's the connection from the classroom to the real world. Unlike many other educational ratings, the Gold Medal Award is earned by a focus on results, primarily test scores and graduation rates. The education quotient also focuses on another indicator of success, which is really important in our district, community support, by comparing various communities' commitments to financial support of public education. The report is mailed to more than 45,000 CEOs and other officers of companies who have indicated they are considering expanding into new areas. So it has a direct impact on the economic interest of the community. And as our local economic developers will tell you, education is really their ace card when they go out and compete against other cities. So congratulations to our Board of Education, our Superintendent and Administrators, and to our entire school district on this recognition. And now I think Dr. All has a recognition.
Typically, at this point in the year, the Board President passes the gavel to the next Board President, and also the former Board President gets a plaque. And this year, the former Board President is the current Board President. And so Mr. Churchman, Board of Education Member, has presented a plaque of gratitude and thanks for the service of Mr. Gilmore this past year as President of the Board of Education. And I think President Gilmore can look forward to another plaque at the end of this year so he can start a wall of fame of his Board of President's plaques. But we are very honored to have him serve again, and I know the Board appreciates his leadership last year, and we all will appreciate his leadership for this next year. Thank you.
I'm sure we can find a way to just add some etching to this one. That'll save some money. All right, we're at that time in our agenda where we have time for public comments, Section Four of our agenda. At each regular meeting, the Board reserves limited time for individuals wishing to address the Board. We request that individual speakers limit their comments to five minutes. The clerk will monitor the time and notify the speaker when the five-minute time limit has expired. We ask that you please direct your comments to the entire Board. If a response is appropriate, the President will respond or refer to another individual. In an effort to respect privacy, we ask that speakers refrain from discussing personal complaints involving individual staff, staff members, or students. Those speaking are advised that public comments are videotape recorded for broadcast on the district's educational access channel and audiotape recorded as a matter of public record. Individuals addressing the Board should come to the podium at the front of the room, directly to my right, and state your name and address before you speak. We have no one in the record that has signed up ahead of the meeting to speak, so I'll ask, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to the Board during the public comments section? Seeing no indication, we'll dispense with the public comments and move on to the remainder of our agenda. Board members, we're now on the consent agenda, which is Section Five. So I'll ask, is there any items within the consent agenda that you wish to have further information or clarification on, or you'd like to see pulled separately for any reason? If there is none, then we'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'd make a motion to approve consent agenda items as listed.
Second. It's a move by Mr. Parker, seconded by Mr. Churchman. Any further discussion? Mrs. Carpenter.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes. And that motion carries. Section Six of our agenda is action on bids, contracts, and agreements. We have four items listed there. Are there any questions, comments, or need for clarifications? If there are none, we'll entertain a motion to approve those as presented, please.
Mr. Gilmore, I move to approve bids, contracts, and agreements as listed.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Churchman and Dr. Daniels. Are there any further discussion? Mrs. Carpenter.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
And that motion passes. On to Section Seven, which is other action items. 7.01 deals with budget development. Mr. Deener, I believe you're going to make a short presentation to us.
Yes.
Welcome.
Good evening. Yes, the information that we would like to provide this evening is essentially a quick overview of where we've been, what we're looking at, and what we're trying to work with the Board this evening as far as the approval of a notice of hearing. Would make note publicly that the Board has not had an opportunity to look at this information yet as a Board, and so any information that has been dispersed at this point in time has just been information from the staff as far as information for the public. So this will be the first time the Board will have an opportunity to work and speak with each other on this topic. As we look at what has occurred so far throughout the year in the budget development process, we have had an opportunity, and the Board has created opportunities for the public to have input throughout the year in the process. We have preliminary information on many different topics related to the budget throughout the time period of January through June. Tuesday evening, we had a budget workshop, of which is held in this room, for the public to come and gain information and ask questions that they may have. This evening is a key point in that the Board needs to look at a notice of hearing, and we're going to talk about that a little more in just a second, followed by a public hearing that will be set this evening on a later action item by the Board of Education. The notice of hearing is an extremely important document because what it does is lays out all the proposed budgets that are overseen by this Board of Education. In that document, it provides information on actual expenditures over the last couple of years, and probably most importantly, is it provides information on projected mill levies for the six different levy funds that are being looked at. This year's budget, without going into a lot of detail, it talks and addresses a growth of, student growth of around 650 students, which is going to be an additional $2 million, roughly, for providing for that additional enrollment. It maintains pupil-teacher ratios in our classrooms. It opens a new elementary school, Madison Place, which is equivalent to about 1.6 million. It provides for additional salary compensation for over 4,000 employees of the district. It looks at targeting resources for many of our special programs throughout the district. It addresses health and dental insurance issues, and includes any utility costs and all the other operating costs that are going to be looked at. This budget has essentially six levy funds that are important to us and to the taxpayers. The general fund is going to be based on 640 growth, like we talked about earlier. The supplemental general fund is based on the fact that we are going to be utilizing 30% of our authority. Right now, our district has a legal authority of 30%, and we are recommending that we use the full maximum of 30%. Extraordinary growth is a fund that is looked at by the Board of Tax Appeals, and the authority to levy certain local taxes are granted, and this budget proposes that we levy the full 100% of that extraordinary growth dollars. In the three funds that deal with capital improvements, the capital outlay fund is a fund that has currently at a mill levy of four mills and with an authority of going up to 14 and 1/2 mills. We are going to be, I mean, the discussion at this point in time is somewhere in between the six and six and 1/2 range that the Board might want to discuss this evening. Bond and interest is based on those actual amounts of principal and interest that are necessary to pay off the bond funds that have been sold in the past. Special assessments is essentially the same thing as bond in the sense that these are actual dollars that are being assessed by the city and county to the district for different road improvements and other kind of infrastructure associated with the properties that we have purchased. As we look at historical mill levies, we can see that as we look all the way back to '91, this is prior to the education finance formula that was implemented in 1992. We had probably one of the larger mill levies in the state of Kansas. We'd like to forget about those times. Since that point in time, though, the reduction in local levy has drastically been reduced, and it has maintained very stable throughout the '90s and into the 2000s. There was an adjustment factor in 2004, following the heels of opening a high school, Olathe Northwest, a junior high, and two elementaries within two-year period. That was a tremendous increase of operating costs that were only to be handled through some kind of adjustment on the mill levy. And then we saw a three-mill levy reduction last year. As we look at this year and the consideration that the Board has in working on approving a budget, once again, let's look at the six levy funds, the first being the general fund. That's set by the state legislature, and that's currently 20 mills. We don't really have a lot of options in that area. The supplemental general, which typically we call is the local option budget, is going down. Even though we're levying the full maximum 30%, it's showing a reduction of .9 mills. The extraordinary growth fund is going down by .7 mills. And when we look at the capital improvements, the capital outlay fund is one of them that we have an option to look at. One for up for discussion is somewhere in the vicinity of moving that from six to six and 1/2, but understanding that the Board has total authority to make that whatever they would like to, up to 14 and 1/2 mills. Bond and interest, we have looked at some various scenarios as far as what is required to meet our principal and interest payments, and somewhat for planning for the future, knowing that the potential for a bond election, there is no potential, there will be a bond election, and the potential for having some bond sales that might come online next year that would provide for some of those opportunities. And special assessments, which is going up four mills, which is reflective of some of the benefit districts that have been rather large of recent history. In conclusion, then, and this sort of winds things up, we're looking at a current mill levy right now for the '07-'08 year, for the '06-'07 year of 65.18 mills. The Board, I would entertain that the Board would have a discussion on where we might fall for this year with the ultimate goal to give direction to the staff for two major things. Number one, what amount would the Board like for us to publish in the notice of hearing? Realizing that the notice of hearing is not in any way, shape approving budgets or setting the levy, but only giving a maximum threshold for that levy for the public to respond to. Later in this evening, then, you'll be setting a date for a public hearing. We're recommending August 16th, at which point in time, we would like, staff would like to provide the Board all the state documents that are associated with those budgets, which are many pages of more detailed information and supportive documentation on all of those budgets. And so essentially, we'd like two directions. One, what kind of information should we base the notice of hearing on? And then also, if there is a difference, what should we base the regular budget on that you might want to look at for approval at the next meeting? And so with that, I would conclude and simply say that we are at the point of approving the notice of hearing, and that's what we'll be asking the Board to do. It would be staff's intent then to take that document and provide it to the Olathe News so that that can be published in the August 4th, which is the Saturday paper. And part of that, then, will be identifying what night the Board selects for the public hearing so that the public can have an opportunity to respond. So with that, I would go back to the slide that talks about the opportunity for Board to discussion and give direction as to what their desire is for the notice of hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Deener. And let me say, as the President of the Board and on behalf of the Board, let's express our thanks to you for all the work that you and your team do in putting, the general public has no idea how much we abuse you in this process, in terms of all the time that you spend with us going over the questions and what the what-ifs and so forth. And thank you for your time in indulging all of us as we try to re-educate ourselves every year with this budget process and also try to do what we think is in the best interest of the district. And I just want to thank you for that because we know it doesn't happen by accident.
Okay.
Board members, I'd like to start this discussion, if you don't mind, tonight because I, as we've looked at the preliminary information that Mr. Deener's put together for us, indicating, I believe, the 65.675 mill levy, as I've contemplated that, I would really like to see us entertain a way to reduce the mill levy, the proposed mill levy, ultimately has to get set by what the county does, but we still have to establish a target. And I say that in light of things that we're trying to do globally. We have a bond issue we're trying to pass in the fall. We also are going to talk about local option budget authority a little bit later. And in light of those things, I think it's prudent that we look to try to reduce the mill levy in this budget year, and I think it's possible. And let me tell you where I'm looking at those areas. The first one is what's been given for consideration indicates an additional half a mill in our bond and interest fund, and I think that's been proposed. Sort of, we know eventually we're going to have to increase that, especially after the bond, if the bond is successful, or I should say, when the bond is successful. And so we know we're going to have some additional levying to do there, but I believe we can forego that half a mill this year in this proposal in order to keep the mill levy down. And then we look at capital outlay, and I have been going back in my mind between reducing that proposed mill levy some more, not to reduce the level of spending that we would do. I think we should keep what's been proposed to spend the same. I think we've got $17 million of priorities identified for these funds, but to reduce that mill levy enough so that we can get somewhere with a total one-mill reduction in our mill levy from where it stands for this year, for this past year. That's probably going to require, unless additional funds come in through the capital outlay fund, that, because it's not just the mill levy, there's, Gary, what are all the different things that go into that fund?
Motor vehicle tax.
Say that again? There's motor vehicle.
Motor vehicle tax, state aid is part of that, interest, and those are the three biggies.
You know, if we went this direction, we can basically end up at a target, I'm estimating somewhere about 2 and 1/2% on the reserve level. Remember, we've been targeting 3%. Remember, we've been targeting 3% of cash reserve or fund balance based on the fixed assets of the district. I think if we chose to move that mill levy down to 5 and 1/2 mills, we'd be able to, we would drop to basically 2 and 1/2% based on my estimation. And Gary, you'd probably have to help me ballpark that to be sure, but I was using about $1.8 million is about a mill. Does that sound right?
That's correct.
So I'd like to lay that on the table and see what support we can get for that because I think it's possible. I'd also like to point out, as we talk about, I'm not talking about the contingency reserve number, I'm talking about the capital outlay reserve. Capital outlay is one of those things that really, we don't, other than the state aid part of it, which is a small part of it, doesn't fluctuate. I mean, we have a lot of control over this. We have 14 and 1/2-mill authority, which, Gary, in recent years, I think our mess we've ever done is somewhere in the seven-mill range back half a dozen years ago or so. And since then, we've been down in this four or five range. I think it's doable, as long as we're comfortable with the potential of dipping into the cash reserves down to that 2 and 1/2% level, or if additional funds come in, we have the funds there to do and don't have to dip into the reserves. So I come to rambling here, but I'm hoping you're understanding what I'm saying. We could present then to the public a budget that indicates a one-mill reduction, even with all the increases that we're showing and all the priorities that we've established. So I'd have that on the floor for discussion.
Mr. Gilmore, I appreciate your comments, and I would like to second what you said. I think it's the proper and the prudent thing to do. And just want to take a trip through history here. I think this Board has done the right thing over the last number of years and we have collectively reduced the mill levy. And we've done it for the sole purpose, or at least the pointed purpose, to set the table for knowing that we had the bond initiatives coming our way. And I think that the Board is to be applauded on that. And if we look at really how we've done that, we've, on average sequentially, over the last several years, increased the investment in the capital infrastructure through capital outlay in our schools of approximately 38%. And even with reducing the capital outlay levy, as Mr. Gilmore has indicated, it still leaves us in a very strong financial position. I also agree with keeping the spending plan and what we've initially targeted here and therefore using a small amount of those cash reserves to bridge the difference. And that is a fund that is self-adjusting year over year. We talked about that last year. I think that worked out very successfully. But I think that what we have the opportunity to do here is to continue to reinforce and send the message to the community that we're being prudent about the use of the funding, that we're setting the table for a bond initiative that really continues to invest in our schools and does the right kinds of things that we need to do. And so for clarification, Mr. Gilmore, the way I understand the proposal that you're talking about is a mill off of the current 65.18 that we've experienced for 2006 and 2007, and we achieve that by taking capital outlay from 6.5 to 5.5, still keeping the spending plan as listed there, and then taking the bond and interest from the 16.5 down half a mill, if I understood you correctly.
Yeah, that's right.
So just in conclusion, I would like to say that I think that's the prudent thing to do. I think it still allows us to spend at a very robust level in our schools and use our cash wisely and not put the district in any kind of risk.
I have a question in regards to the half a mill in the bond and interest. What was the rationale and the reasoning behind the additional half a mill in bond and interest than what we would need to meet the current obligations?
Okay. When the bond election is approved and we have our first bond sale probably being projected in November, December, if we are going to actually make payments on that bond sale in the '08-'09 fiscal year, the first payment would come in September of 2008. The budget that we're creating right now is an 18-month budget for the bond and interest. In other words, we need to levy enough funds now so that cash balances that are remaining as of next July are sufficient to pay for the bond and interest payment in September because there are no additional funds that are going to be received from the county or the state between next June 30th, when we close our books, and when that next payment is due. If we don't prepare for the eventuality that there would be some additional bond payments, then what we would need to work with with our bond counsel is to defer, even though we're going to make, we would make the sale in November, December this year, we would have to ensure that we deferred any payments to the potential bond purchasers until the next spring of 2009. That can be done, but it's at a term called capitalization of interest, which then adds to the cost of the public for that sale. It can be done and it can be structured that way. It would be done that way in lieu of the fact of planning for the possibility that it might exist. And so in answer to your question, which hopefully that came close, the .5 that's built in there now provides for that opportunity. If we do not include it, then we're going to only plan for paying for current known debt.
So in essence, the bottom line would be that we'd sell our, we'd have to, we'd still sell our bonds in the winter, December, January timeframe, and wouldn't make our first bond payment until the following spring. So it'd be almost over a year before.
It'd be over a year.
So I don't suppose we have any idea what the interest cost on that would be over that period of time in lieu of making a bond payment in September with the half a mill in bonded interest this year in order to be able to do that?
I wouldn't even want to make a projection. Yeah, it's going to depend on so many variables, what the bond sale was, the length of the bond maturity that the Board decides at that point in time. It'll depend on a lot of factors.
Then in light of what Mr. Gilmore and Mr. Churchman suggested, I would be supportive of the one-mill reduction in the capital outlay, and I understand that and would be supportive of that. But it would seem like it would be prudent for us to consider that half a mill in bonded interest to be able to make that bond payment in September rather than waiting in another six or seven months because we all know what the interest costs are going to be on that bond. And we have been, always been in a position and have taken the position that we wanted to reduce our interest costs to the extent that was possible, and we've refunded bonds and we've shortened the length of the bond. So this is, without doing that half a mill in bonded interest seems to be kind of counterproductive to me and against what we have done in the past. So I would like for us to consider that half a mill in bonded interest. And I understand that we have another bond issue coming and I certainly want to be respectful and I certainly want to understand that we have citizens on fixed incomes and families who are, a dollar is really important to them, and I don't want to use that, to be reckless with that, but I think it would be prudent for us to consider that half a mill in bonded interest.
I don't think that's a question that is not prudent. I do believe it is a prudent one. And so the flip side of that is that you're then accruing cash on a speculative basis and, you know, not to try and look at what the other potential scenarios could be, but not having known what that interest cost is. And this was something that we kind of debated around here, you know, maybe four or five months ago and really never came to a conclusion. So in all due respect, my recommendation would be that, you know, we don't take a pocket or a dollar out of the pockets today for something that's unknown tomorrow as far as, and when I talk about unknown, timing and issuance of the bonds, size of what that first issuance may be, those are all things that will pull at whatever that potential interest cost would be. I would recommend that we play it more conservatively and address a known situation when it's known.
Gary, can we take any kind of history and look at, has this been a practice in the past? And so if it has been a practice in the past, what is the history shown in the actuality of payment of that?
While that has not been an issue that I believe the Board has actively participated with, internally, staff have made that, have made those projections and have made those as part of the proposals that have been provided to passports.
Mr. Deener, is there any way to know, and I appreciate what Mr. Churchman has said, and I understand about salving away cash reserves for something that's unknown, but I certainly expect that we're going to have a bond issuance and I certainly expect that we're going to have to have bond payment in September. So is there any idea to know how much that would be? And if it's not a half a mill, maybe it's a quarter mill that would help us make that bond payment in September and not have to forego that until, for another seven or eight months?
Gary, if I may, and sorry, Mr. Parker, to interrupt you, but I'd like to ask a related, parallel question to that, maybe you can answer them at the same time. In the bond and interest fund, of course, there's money coming in and going out all the time. We don't have a set, if you will, reserve level for that. We don't target it to anything other than what we project the numbers to be. But you know how in the past, we've looked at capital outlay and the contingency and said, all right, what was the, you know, what's the lowest we got to at any one point in time? Do you recall what that balance might be in that fund, the bond and interest fund, at any point in time? In other words, how much cushion is there? There's got to be some level of cushion there.
Well, the way the formula works that the state has created for that calculation, they have probably put more effort into that form than they have any other form because of the critical nature that the state would not want to create a form that would ever put a district in jeopardy of not having the funds available July 1 to make all payments necessary for the next six-month period. And so that form takes away any and all cash balances. In other words, whatever cash balances were there on June 30th, when we've made the calculation, we have only plugged in what it's going to be necessary for making the principal and interest payments. The rest then is just based on the projected cash flow that's going to be coming in. And it basically makes a projection on mill levy based on making the necessary payments. I mean, it...
Okay. In the recommendation that we had in the materials when we first got the budget draft, there was several options for us to look at, and one of them, the third option, was reducing the bond interest levy by that half a mill. What was the basis of that recommendation in light of this conversation? I mean, were you thinking?
What we built in there was about $800,000, which is about equivalent to that half mill.
Mr. Deener, just a question in parallel to these two questions. Do we have the ability with the interest that we gain on our bond money to use that interest towards this issue?
We do. That is what we do. In other words, the projections for next year on that mill levy for bond and interest is already taking into consideration projected interest that's going to be earned on our outstanding invested funds.
Thank you.
Which is always an estimate in itself.
I think I'm still a little bit confused because if there's a formula for establishing what we put into that bond and interest fund, this is an imperfect science going into our next bond issue. So if the bond issue isn't passed, what would happen with that money that we were accumulating to make that interest payment?
If the bond election was not approved, then the dollars, let's say that those, that $900,000, and I said 800, but I meant $900,000, that was put in there to account for that half-mill increase, then would be part of a cash balance that would be available next June that was not necessary. And when we did the next calculation, it would, in essence, lower next year's levy automatically by .5. So it would, the concern, I respect the concern about not taxing what's not needed now, but the adjustment would be within a one year. That would compensate and then reduce next year's levy by that amount.
And then we invest those receipts that are coming in on an ongoing basis.
Always, yes, always.
That's what the idle funds are that we're investing, correct?
Correct.
So I think in a normal environment, I wouldn't have issue with the consideration, but knowing the work that we've put forth, and I don't think there's a material difference, Mr. Parker, in my mind, between a quarter of a mill or not, you know, but it's just the concerted effort, and we've collectively tried to do this, to keep the mill levy as low as possible, knowing that the initiatives we had before, the public, we're making room for that. So it's just a continued effort for that, but I don't look that there's a right or wrong answer here.
I would want to be sure that all of my fellow Board members were in agreement that we would continue our plans to do all of those capital outlay projects that we have talked about doing and that we are willing to dip into the reserves to complete all of those projects if we agree we're going to lower the mill levy in capital outlay. Everybody knows how important that ongoing work is to me personally, but I want to make sure that we don't cut that list down of projects, that we continue doing them and everybody is okay with that, knowing that we're dipping into cash, or into cash reserves to do that.
Well, I, for one, will reaffirm that I think that's the smart thing to do, and I agree with that, and I think it's a proper and wise use of funding considering the amount that we're talking about.
If I could make just one other comment for consideration, I think we know and we've discussed the fact that the mill levy for the bond and interest will go up next year. One of the things that I think the Board has talked about, at least, is the idea of a stable mill levy to as great a stand as possible, at the same time, keeping in mind the impact on our patrons and our taxpayers and the desire to keep it as low as we possibly can. I mean, I respect all that. There will be a mill levy increase next year because of bond and interest. I mean, we know that, looking at that. And in some ways of maintaining the levy at the level it currently is makes that increase next year appear less. Anything we do to lessen the levy now for this next year will just make that gap to where it has to go the next year all the greater, unless the Board is willing to continue on that path, then of continuing to eat into the reserves of capital outlay, because once that path is started, once you start using cash reserves for known expenditures, then you either keep on that path of making the goal of 2 and 1/2, was 3%, I mean, it is 3%. If we accept that we're going to go to 2.5 or 2.6, then to continue that, it might be 2.1 or 2.2 the next year, and we need to keep that in mind as well because those are all decisions that are going to come upon us then next year. I just, I'm not, just need to point that out.
I appreciate that, Gary, and I think that's well said. I think we also need to understand and remember that our BOTA mill levy is probably going to go down a mill and 1/2 next year roughly because we have 2.4 million or 2 and 1/2 million that's going to come down next year. So there's another, because we're losing that authority over time because of the new facility. So, you know, that's another thing that's going to counter what's going to happen with the bond and interest. I had another question and it just left me, so I better defer to somebody else, it'll come back, sorry.
Just to add to that, Mr. Gilmore, you know, we used $9.4 million of our cash reserves last year to supplement capital outlay, which was a record level of doing that. And we talked about that cash reserve fund being self-adjusting, and here we are at the end of taking that very courageous step, and we see that we're still hovering around a 3% mark. So I think that's good news and reaffirms the fact that this fund is self-adjusting year over year. But I do want to reaffirm one point, I don't agree or disagree with Mr. Deener with what you've said, but I am very hesitant to take, once again, a dollar out of the community's pockets today for tomorrow. To me, stable means that the mill levy goes down when it goes down and can go down within a relative movement, and then when it goes up, it needs to go up. And we've been laying the foundation for the increase that you've talked about. And we've agreed here collectively that we'll give a dollar back when we can and when we need to raise it, we'll do so responsibly, and the net result will probably still be less than where we started from. So I continue to advocate that we keep the mill levy as low as we can without infringing upon those things that we need to do. And I believe that Mr. Gilmore's outlined a plan to do that.
Another, in the prior three years, prior to last year, if you look back at our history, there were, we were in a situation as a district where at the end of the year when we did the transfers, we actually had funds that we transferred into capital outlay because we had some pretty significant things we wanted to do. This year, this budget, we're not in that position. You know, we didn't transfer money into capital outlay this year. Don't let me misspeak, Gary, but I'm sure that's right. Nor does this, nor would we perhaps have money next year contemplated in here. Where I'm going with that comment is, we still have some significant needs, and Rita, I would agree with your comment, we don't want to lose the 17 million that we've slated and how we want to use that money. I've never proposed cutting that down. I think it's important. But coming back to that cash reserve number, I'm, as I've, I guess I'm starting my fifth year and I'm getting smarter every year, I really think we can dip into that cash reserve level without contemplating our operation, without contemplating our bond rating and all those kinds of things, to use those funds when we have a year where there's not going to be excess coming from operating... when we have a year where there's not going to be excess coming from operating funds to deal with these kinds of issues so we can continue to make progress on those. The list is a lot longer than we're even dealing with in fiscal year '08, assuming we can get all those things done in fiscal year '08. So, again, I just want to lay that out there as a, as an argument in support of not being too concerned about dipping into that cash balance sum, that fund balance, because we have, we know how we're going to use it.
Mr. Gilmore, could you comment on, on your thoughts on the, the half mil in bond and interest for the, for the purposes of being able to make a bond payment, interest payment in September of '08?
Well, honestly, Mr. Parker, I hadn't focused on it for that reason prior to tonight. Maybe I didn't ask the right question. I'm still, Gary, I guess I'm still looking for an answer in option number three, where we were saying the board could reduce it by half a mil and could reduce capital out by, by half a mil. What was the answer to that question going to be if we did reduce it by half a mil? What was going to be the solution to that, that question? We'd have come back tonight and said, let's do option number three. How are we going to address that question?
Phrase that differently.
Well, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but I'm just trying to-
But I want to make sure I answered the question, yeah.
In the original budget draft that came out, you gave us three proposed options we might consider.
Correct.
And the third of those options was to look for an overall one mil reduction off of the proposal, not off the current level, but off the proposal. Half of that was going to come from the bond and interest fund and half from capital outlay.
Correct.
All I'm saying is, yeah, let's do the half out of bonded interest as you suggested in option number three.
And, and what that would be doing is not preparing for any eventuality of a payment in, in September of '08.
Okay. I mean, my understanding prior to tonight was, we were just kind of preparing for eventual mill levy increases, and, you know, making the pain a little less by going up another, and maybe I just misinterpreted that. That's my interpretation. But you're saying it was more tied to dealing with what potentially could happen if we issued some bonds in December.
That's correct. And I apologize if I give it any other indication on that, yeah. It was the half, where it was set originally was in preparation of the potential for a September payment.
In the eventuality that we, in the eventuality that we ever came up short there, I don't know that that's ever happened.
No.
There's no, there's nowhere to go for those funds. I mean, can we dip in our contingency to pay for that, in our operating contingency, where we've got substantial funds?
I believe that the capital outlay fund could be used for that, but I, I would need to check to see if there's legal authority for that.
Because you were targeting about $900,000 was-
Yes.
-basically the target that you had.
Right.
So, I think, Mr. Parker, in answer to your question, I think there are options there if we need them in that eventuality, places to go for those funds, not like we can't make our bond payments. And I would agree, I'd rather do that than end up capitalizing the interest over the next however many years those bonds are spread out over.
Yes, I certainly think that's a viable option. And the other thing that causes me pause on accruing that interest is not knowing what, what the amount of interest would be in relation to the $900,000. Just doing some very quick calculations, I think it's going to be less than that, which means that I would rather, I would rather pay that incremental interest than accruing the $900,000 that may end up being in a cash reserve or, you know, who knows? Particularly knowing if we can use the cash reserves that we've got there for capital outlay on a short-term basis.
Why don't we, let me make a suggestion. I'm going to credit Dr. All for this, because I think it's a, it's a reasonable suggestion. One of the two questions you need to answer tonight, Mr. Deaner, is what do we create the budgets on versus what do we publish notice on?
Correct.
One of the things we could consider, board members, is going ahead and publishing, including the additional half mil in the bond and interest, and then give Gary additional time between now and the 16th to figure out the answer to it. Can we use capital outlay money or, or operating contingency? And then we can discuss it again on the 16th. I think that we'd get a little more context for the question, everybody would feel a little better. I think that's a reasonable approach, and I'd like to offer that as a solution if you were all agreement with that.
So, then the one question to be answered, be remaining, would be whether or not to utilize the half mil or some portion thereof for bond and interest.
Right. It would leave that, we'll leave that at 16 and a half. Drop the capital outlay to five and a half is what I'm proposing as the published, the notice for the public hearing, because we can always do something different, less than that, at the adoption of the actual budget on the 16th. And Mr. Deaner can work on some scenarios and some additional information for that.
I would be comfortable with that.
I would be also.
Thank you. I'd be comfortable with that as well. Then we're going to need a motion.
Mr. Gilmore, let's just talk for a moment about what that motion is exactly.
I was going to leave that up to you.
Okay, well, I'm more than happy to make one. So, Mr. Gilmore, I will so move that we publish, I have to do some math there, we, we publish a, are we going to publish our, our maximum authority but still state that an interim mill levy of taking capital outlay down to 5.5 with the bond and interest to be TBD?
We'd be looking at publishing what's been presented, with the exception of the capital outlay would go from six and a half to five and a half. So, the overall mill levy target would be 64.675. Mr. Deaner, have I stated that correctly?
Roughly going down a half from what it currently is?
Yeah. I'm looking compared to what the proposal was.
Yeah, okay.
Going from the 65.675 in the proposal down to 64.675, the one mil.
Yes.
So, Mr. Gilmore, I propose that we publish to the community for the purpose of our public budget hearing, a mill levy of 64.675 mils.
Second.
And that's going to represent roughly, based on the publication, a half mil reduction from the present?
Yes.
Just so everybody's on the same page. All right. Mr. Churchman has made a motion, and Mr. Parker, did you second that?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? Mrs. Carpenter.
And I just lost my monitor. I lost my computer.
We're having all kinds of technical difficulties tonight.
Yes.
Mr. Parker? Mrs. Daniel, Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
And that motion passes. Thank you very much. Great discussion. Gary, did we give you direction on your two questions?
I just want to make sure I've got one, a couple of things clear. Additional information on the bond and interest is to clarify if we were not to, if we did have a payment that could become due in September but chose not to, what that cost might be by postponing it to March.
Yeah, I think what we want, let me help you there. Let's come back to showing us how you estimate what that potential bond payment could be, based on how you came up with that number.
Okay.
And then the second question is, if we chose to reduce bond and interest by an additional half mil, and we had, didn't have the funds in the, in the bond and interest fund to pay that-
Could it be spent out of someplace else?
Where else could we get those funds?
Okay.
And what would the interest costs be associated with that, that delay?
Yes.
Or if we capitalized it, what's the associated additional cost from capitalizing it?
And all of this is based around still continuing with that 17 million expenditure budget for capital outlay?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. I think I have what I need. I'm going to leave now and go upstairs and finalize that notice of hearing so that you can sign it yet this evening.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Deaner. Item 7 dot 02, dealing with certificated employee compensation. Is there any questions on this item?
Mr. Gilmore, were we going to address that after executive session, or did I misunderstand that?
No, not that item.
No? Thank you.
That was 7 dot 04 and 5, Mr. Churchman.
Just in order to provide some additional information here in a review, the Teachers' Association through Professional Counsel and the Board of Education, we reached a tentative agreement, and that agreement would provide for a compensation plan for our certified licensed staff that would provide a minimum 4% increase in salary over the 2006, 2007 salary schedule for all teachers, educators that currently are on the schedule, and it would provide a 3.25% for those that are beyond the levels or steps on the current schedule. And this also has a second part of that that would provide for a plan for 2008, 2009 that includes a modified professional pay salary schedule that reduces the levels, the number of levels, but provides for educators to get to their maximum salary at a, at a sooner point in their career. And we hope that this will be part of the recruitment and retention of quality teachers here. So, over a two-year period of time, this represents a 7% increase for every member in the bargaining unit as compared to 2006, '07. There is a reopeners clause in this agreement that allows the district and the Olathe, NEA to discuss for 2008, 2009 to, to make modifications that, based on our negotiation process. And we're asking for board approval of that agreement.
Thank you, Dr. All. Are there any questions if, or comments? If not, we'll entertain a motion for approval.
Mr. Gilmore, so moved to approve compensation for certi, certified employees as recommended by the Professional Counsel and to approve policy revisions to policy GBZED salary schedule concerns or conditions.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Churchman, seconded by Ms. Ashley. Any further discussion? Mrs. Carpenter.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
And that motion passes, and I would just like to express our thanks to all of those in the Professional Counsel for the, I think, the spirited way in which we negotiate these things. And, Mr. Spots, thank you to you and your team. We really appreciate all that. We feel there's a great cooperation going on there. And thank you, Dr. All. We know you're the representative of this board in the middle of all those negotiations. And just thank you to everyone. We really appreciate it.
Good. And I'd like to add my comments to that. Who really benefits from this are our children ultimately. So, when we can, can come to these agreements in the spirit of cooperation and trust and understanding that ultimately the kids are the ones who are the great benefactors of that. And thank you.
All right. Item 7 dot 03, dealing with an athletic trainer agreement with Olathe Medical Center. Are there any questions regarding this item? Oh, Dr. All, you want to make some comments?
I just want to make an introductory comment, because one of the processes that we've put in place is Scott Mason, our legal counsel internally, I have him reviewing contracts that are coming forth that are maybe on a renewal basis. We've had a partnership and an agreement with the Olathe Medical Center since the mid-'90s, and that, that contract has just been ongoing and renewed every year. And I had him review it, and it was in his opinion that this kind of contract needs to come to the board, even though it's been a longstanding relationship. And so, normally, I would try to get that to you a month early. That's why I put it on as a separate action item, so I could make that comment. And you may, this is part of our just overall taking a look at our systems and making sure that our contracts are going in the right place based on the dollar amounts and the significance that are going forward. And we, this has been a wonderful relationship with the Olathe Medical Center. Our athletic trainer program has really been a key service that has helped keep our student athletes safe and, and helped reduce potential for long-term injury by playing in our athletic programs. And it is a valuable resource here that our coaches and our parents and our students appreciate. But I wanted to bring that to your attention separately, and I would entertain any questions and any questions for Scott if, if needed.
Silence is consent, but we do have to vote. Go ahead, Scott.
Yeah, I was going to say, I would just point out that this is, as Dr. All has mentioned, this is just a renewal. There's a 5% increase this year to 90, a little over 91,000. The total cost of the program is roughly 186,000, which we pay about half of that, and the, a medical center picks up the other half. And we also get 40,000 each year from the medical center, which we apply the bulk of that to help offset these costs. So, it's a, a pretty advantageous arrangement that we've had. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Hearing none, we need a motion.
Mr. Gilmore, I'll so move to approve renewal of athletic trainer agreement with Olathe Medical Center for 2007 and '08.
Second.
Been moved by Mr. Churchman, seconded by Dr. Daniels. Any further discussion? Mrs. Carpenter.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
The motion passes. I mentioned earlier that items 7 dot 04 and 05 will deal with after the executive session, so let's move on to 7 dot 06. Two appointments to make to KSB representatives. First is to the Governmental Relations Network, and the second one will be to the Nominating Committee. And just for your information, I was originally appointed to that position, but I will not be here in September for the board meeting or for that meeting, so we'll need another representative. It's a Saturday morning meeting.
What's the date on the meeting, Mr. Gilmore?
It's that weekend after Labor Day. I don't remember the date, but it's Saturday morning, I believe, at 9:00 AM. That would be the ninth or eighth? Yeah, the eighth, that's correct. So, are there any volunteers? Is there a motion to appoint Mr. Poland, since he's not here? I know from which I speak, because that happened to me before, yes.
Is it recorded in the record?
You have to go on record with your vote, Mrs. Wilhelm.
I'd be interested in knowing if Mr. Parker would be interested in any of those positions.
Just so you know, the Nominating Committee is just a one-day meeting, it's all it is. It's that one Saturday morning. They serve you lunch, and that's all there is.
I'm also out of town that Saturday, otherwise I would be happy to fill in for Kevin, but I will be out of town.
And I go to a KASB meeting the weekend before.
Okay. Knowing that it's just the morning, and KU doesn't play until 6:00 PM that evening, I'll do it.
Second.
We have a self-nomination by Dr. Daniels and a second by Mr. Parker.
That's for the KSB Nominating Committee.
Nominating Committee.
What about the Governmental Relations Network?
Yeah, we'll just take names, and then we'll vote, so that's correct.
I've been doing that for the last couple of years, and I'm actually not so sure of what I was supposed to be doing. I'd be glad to continue.
I so move Ms. Ashley be designated as our KSB Governmental Relations Network Representative for 2007 and '08.
All right. For the sake of clarity, Mr. Churchman, why don't you move both of those, and then we'll get a second, and we'll take them all at one time.
And I also so moved to appoint Dr. Daniels to be representative to the KASB Nominating Committee.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Last chance to back out. Mrs. Carpenter.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
That motion carries. Thank you. Item 7 dot 07 is to, action to set a special meeting. This is for our public hearing for the '07, '08 budget and any other agenda items that have yet to be determined. August 16th is the proposed date. Is that date okay with everyone? I know we've had that date in front of us for a little while. Mrs., I'm shaking her head down there. Mrs. Wilhelm's shaking her head down there.
That's fine. You've had that public.
Okay. How do we need to pick a time? Does 6:00 PM work okay? 6:00 PM? Okay. Then we need a motion.
Mr. Gilmore, so moved that we set a special meeting date and time for Thursday, August 16th at 6:00 PM.
Second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded to set our public hearing date for the '07-'08 budget at August 16th, 6:00 PM. Mrs. Carpenter.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
That motion carries. Item 7 dot 08 is dealing with local option budget authority, a proposal to increase the authority by placing that resolution on the ballot. I believe you saw in your board materials a letter from Mr. Churchman to me as he originally raised this issue to my awareness, and we had some discussion about it. I encouraged him to put his thoughts in writing so that we could put it on the agenda and discuss it tonight. And I want to apologize that this is a little unorthodox for us in putting something of this magnitude on the agenda without having it there the prior month as a future action item or a future discussion item. But we have some constraints if we wish to move forward on this in terms of the timeframe that we're involved with, and that is, it can be added to the ballot initiative in October, but we would have to get the proposed language to the county election office by the 10th of August, which is why we've placed this issue on the agenda for tonight for discussion and potential action. I think Mr. Churchman's letter is self-explanatory, and I think really clearly distinguishes the reasons for this. And with that, Mr. Churchman, why don't I ask you to kind of articulate some of your basis, which I have concurred with in terms of getting this authority out there, and then we can have anyone else comment related to it.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. I look back over this evening, and I think there have been a number of comments that have been made. The one that resonates most with me is that teachers make the difference. And I think hopefully we'll all agree that while we have wonderful plans in place to put, to continue with world-class facilities and all that comes with that, at the end of the day, what really makes the difference is the teacher in that classroom and the relationship with the student. Over the past number of years, this board has been very aggressive in trying to increase the competitiveness with the salaries and overall compensation for our teachers and for the support staff. And those are the right things to do. And as we look at the opportunity to go ahead and take advantage of the ability to continue that roadmap and that walk on making the Olathe School District one of the top competitive districts in alignment with our strategic goal to retain and continue to attract the top talent, this is an opportunity to do that, to increase our teachers' compensation and our support staff even further, to continue the investment in things such as certifications and those types of things that directly improve the environment and the results in the classroom, and also then to continue to invest in some of the wonderful succession planning initiatives that Dr. All and her staff have moved forward on. And, you know, I think the wrong message to go out to the community is that this is just simply a tax increase, because that's not what it is at all. It's putting money in the right places to give this district the flexibility to do the right kinds of things, particularly when it comes to our teachers and support staff. And the public doesn't need to look very far to look back over the last three budget approval sessions where this board has prudently lowered the mill levy in anticipation of doing these kinds of strategic things. And I would challenge people to look throughout the state of Kansas and see a district that has proposed an LOB increase but has also paved the way to keep the mill levy at a very responsible level. And that's what this board has demonstrated again this evening, and that's what, you know, I propose as the premise behind this LOB increase. It also gives the board the opportunity to consider other flexible options that would be at its disposal. And I also believe that it's important to note that simply going forward and obtaining the authority for this board to go with an LOB increase doesn't necessarily equate to the fact that the board will choose to levy the 1% either in part or in whole. But having that authority brings with us a number of options that are the right things to do. And as we look through our society and see a lot of priorities, there is none more important than the teacher and the support staffs that educate and are with our children all day long. So that's the basic premise for this proposal. I think it brings great flexibility to the board. I think that the community will embrace it. I hear a lot from constituents about what is it we're doing to enhance the environment for our teachers and for our staff. And this, while it appears to be kind of a last-minute effort, this is strategic planning that's been going on by this board for some time, and this just being the culmination of it.
Mr. Gilmore, I'm totally supportive of Mr. Churchman's proposal. And if we recall, back in our many discussions in regards to the bond issue and the bond package, this has been discussed several times. And in all of those discussions and trying to arrive at a responsible bond package, as well as all of the discussions around configurations, it kind of got lost. But I know it has been resonating in my mind, and I know that has been resonating in Mr. Churchman's mind, so I'm supportive of this and for the reason, for the right reasons that Mr. Churchman expressed, but also gives us some flexibility. I'm concerned in regards to the county sales taxes, whether that's going to continue into the future. And we know that's $5 million to our, to our general operating fund also. And in order to utilize the 5% cost of living which is available, we have to be at the maximum, we have to have the maximum authority under the LOB to have that flexibility as well. So if we found ourselves in that position in a year or two, we'd certainly be in a position to be able to exercise that as well. So I applaud Mr. Churchman for bringing this to the board, and I certainly am supportive of it wholeheartedly.
If there's no further discussion or questions, I'd entertain a motion. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Dr. All. Mr. Wilkins, our bond counsel, is also here tonight. And if we have any questions for him, he is here to answer them. We're always intimidated by the lawyers, Mr. Wilkins. I don't think we have any questions. I think everybody's, seems to be clear, so we'll entertain a motion if someone would do, make that.
Mr. Gilmore, I would like to make a motion to approve resolution authorizing and providing for the calling of an election in the Unified School District, 233 Johnson County, Kansas, for the purpose of submitting to the qualified electors of the district a question of authorizing the adoption of a continuous and permanent local option budget in any school year in an amount not to exceed 31% of this amount of state financial aid determined for the current school year and providing for the giving of notice of said election.
Is there a second?
I will second it.
Thank you, Ms. Ashley. Any further discussion? Mrs. Carpenter.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
And that motion passes. Thank you very much. We're to Section 8 on our agenda, which deals with future action items. So I would ask in items 8 dot 01 through 8 dot 08, if there's anything in the agenda there you wish to have further information on or clarification, stuff that any of the staff or Dr. All could work on for future action.
Mr. Gilmore, I have two questions, actually a question and a comment, 8 dot 01 and 8 dot 02. When it comes time to progress further on the proposed sale of the property listed there, I would like for the board just to have an indication of who the potential bidders are for that.
So, I think that would be very difficult. We have some that we will send to, based on advice and counsel. We will have to make the open bid. We will not know who the bidders are until after the field uploads are open, after the field uploads are open, and our spreadsheet, based on who the people are, what the price offer will come to the board, what we're going to take, and we will make that decision. We will not be able to supply a list of people who would bid to profit to that.
Mr. Hoden, would you be able to provide us with a list of who we're going to at least send it out to, so it could be potential bidders, not necessarily people that will actually bid?
Yes, we have a list of the people who have expressed that they're bidding to profit.
Thank you. That would be sufficient for me.
You had a question on the next item?
I just would like to offer up on 8 dot 02, an option for the board to consider here. I would like to ask for the potential to delay action on this for an additional month because I would like to see Dr. All and staff investigate the possibility of self-insuring the district and what potential cost savings slash risk issues that may bring to us before we move forward with that.
One, Gary's out of the room right now, and I know that some of you have worked on this broker agreement before. One of the comments that he's made about this is that we're more than willing to study and think it's a good approach to study the self-insurance factor. We're probably going to need a broker to assist us while we're doing that. And it may be that we can take a look at this agreement and build something in to include that study, but can, the study may take longer than it is needed here in order to delay the approval of this. That's my only concern. And I would like perhaps the option to bring back, based on that comment, some additional information, either to say we have a plan to go forward and here's what it would look like, including this particular agreement, or, you know, if something can come forward faster, would do that. I mean, if I thought we could do it in two months, that wouldn't be a problem. I'm just not sure that that's going to be viable.
Yeah, I think that's a very reasonable approach, and certainly not to infer that's what we want to do, but I do think it's something that behooves us as a district to investigate and ask the questions. And so the additional takeaway from that, that I would ask for to Mr. Mason, I believe the agreement allows us determination for convenience, and just would like to have that reviewed and understand, so in the event that we elected to find that it was financially attractive to do that and we had already approved, what would our rights be there?
Mr. Churchman, I don't necessarily disagree with, certainly would want to take a look at self-insuring and see if there was any savings for us in that, but that's a major undertaking. That can't be accomplished in 30 days because we would need some reinsurance to stop loss. So you certainly, there's a lot of, there's just a lot of variables going there. Certainly, professional counsel would want to be involved in that. So I think that would be an exhaustive, long-term study that would need to be done. And if we wanted to go that direction, it's something that we would need to put together a task force to study that issue, because it's just, trust me, it is not that easy. It's very complex, very complicated, and a lot, there's a lot of dots that would need to be connected, and a lot of people would have to be involved in that. And we would need to have a broker from this point in time to move forward with what we currently have, and to delay that agreement with our current broker would be, put our, you know, we need them to help us administer our current plan. I certainly would be in favor of a long-term study for that, but it just can't happen in 30 days.
Yeah, so I think it's very appropriate. And just for clarification, my intent or desire is not to fully review this and make a determination in 30 days, but simply just trying to get an indication about the viability of studying this. I think it is something we should take a look at, and I agree, there's a tremendous amount of detail associated with it.
And I'd be glad to volunteer to work as a part of that. We need to sit down with our folks at CBIZ, and you need an actuary, you've got to have an actuary study. I mean, there's a tremendous amount of effort that has to go into that, and it's a year project at the minimum. But it certainly would be, we could have an initial conversation with somebody out there who could give us some direction in that and to find out if it's economically, would economically make sense for us, and if it would make sense for us, then we could put a full-court press on it. But we kind of need to get some preliminary information first before we would want to say that that would be certainly a direction that we'd want to go or spend a lot of resources and a lot of time looking at that. So I'd be willing to set with, put together an initial committee and certainly take a look at it and start asking the questions, what would it take for us to be, to self-insure ourselves? I would like to have somebody off of professional counsel, as well as NEA would need to be involved in that. So there, we would want to hear a lot of, get a lot of input in that before we moved off on that.
Absolutely. And this is certainly not intended to be any reflection on CBIZ. They've been a great partner of the district and continue to be, but it's simply looking at what those right financial things are to investigate.
I will work with Gary, you know, to set up a committee to study this.
Yeah. Mr. Churchman, maybe I'm misunderstanding your question when you say self-insure, and that means that we would basically be paying all of claims ourselves and keep all the money in-house? Are you meaning that we would be our, serve as our own third-party administrator and just eliminate the broker and be our own third-party administrator rather than using CBIZ?
Yeah, well, I don't want to portray myself as an insurance expert, and I know that there are others, including yourself, that are more qualified for that, but really what I'm trying to convey is, in the broad statement of self-insurance, what would make sense, if anything, what wouldn't make sense, and how would that look?
Certainly. And certainly, if you were self-insured, that eliminates the broker and the third-party administrator, so that might be a part of the, maybe one piece of it, say, well, we could do this without using a broker or TPA. But again, that's staff, involve staff. You have to bring people in to do that, and it costs a lot of money to do that, so. But we can certainly take a look at that. I'd be glad to sit on a committee to take a look at that and begin those kinds of discussions and have a report back to the board to see if that, if that made any sense for us.
Would it not be prudent to determine what the cost is going to be to do the study and review that as a board before we make the decision to move ahead with the study?
Yeah, certainly. Absolutely. And we just get some preliminary information together to report back to the board as to whether, what our options and that would be.
Yeah, so I think the takeaway is you never know until you ask the question. And, you know, I'm certainly not contemplating a massive effort here unless one, you know, results would warrant that, but simply asking the question and doing some preliminary reviews of it.
That's a great segue into a comment I wanted to make about 8 dot 07 on our future action items, in that you'll see there's a list of, for lack of a better term, committee assignments, study committees, which has really not been an official list of any kind. It's just kind of where we've, some of us have gone different directions to study issues. And I've been talking, speaking with Dr. All about formalizing that process, which is why that's out here for a future action item. If there's one of those committee assignments that you have a particular interest in, either in continuing or being on that committee, I'd like you to let me know, and we'll regather this list and update it for a future formal action, so that when we come up with an issue like this, we can say, let's defer that to the insurance committee, or we have, you know, at least, we have two board members and then whatever appropriate staff is there to help study that issue. Now, with that said, I want to make sure, I don't think we have to limit these committees to two board members. If we have more than two, we're going to have to declare a public meeting. And, you know, that's not, that's not a hard thing to do. I just, so if there's anybody that feels strongly about being on a committee or wants to study a particular subject, we can certainly have more than two school board members, but we just have to go through the legal process on the notice.
Mr. Gilmore, also under that 8.7, 8.07 site council visit schedule is also listed there, and I would just reflect personally, I know that our, one of our target goals for the board is communication with our public, with our patrons. I will reflect that. The number of site council schedules that I signed up for, I certainly was not able to fulfill that commitment as much as I would like to have. And so I'd like some consideration to be given to all of us, for all of us to decide, you know, what we can fulfill in the way of actually being actively involved with a site council and look at what those possibilities might be. I don't know if that's Dr. All assigning us to those site councils, but I would personally feel much more comfortable if I knew I was doing justice to those councils on a regular basis.
I'm going to ask Dr. All to respond to that because we've been discussing that very issue.
With 43 schools, soon to be 44, 44 schools, and you take seven board members, and you can sort of make a division there that it would take for each site council to have at least one representative board member there, would take each of you visiting at least six different site councils in one year, and maybe me picking up one, or picking up a couple more. My suggestion is, all of you are very dedicated, and if you look at the list of potential board committees that developed over last year, I wanted you to take a look at that, and there were probably 10 of them. And then on top of that, you had multiple site council visits, and then on top of that, you have multiple appointments that come before this board, whether you're serving on Head Start Advisory Board, if you're School Plus, like Mike is, KSB Assignments. And so when you look at your ability to represent each other and represent the Board of Education, there may be an opportunity here on site councils to do a couple of things. Either one, say that maybe each board member would take five or six, and this doesn't preclude you from going to others, but I would maybe take some of that sense. preclude you from going to others, but I, I would maybe take some of that sense away that maybe you have to be everywhere. And then I, or I would be glad to assign you, you know, but I don't want to take away your choice there because you may have some specific interest areas. And so if you could kind of generally agree that maybe you would do five or six, then you could share if you had any preferences. If you don't have preferences, then I can assign you. If you do have preferences, maybe out of the six, you want to make sure you get to three schools specifically, we will do that. And then if there are gaps, I'll show you the gaps like we, or Betty will, like we have in the past. And then some of you graciously in the past have said, oh, I can pick up that one if, if there's three going to, to one, or I'll drop off of that. But I just encourage you to, to pick a, a number that's reasonable in your overall schedule. But at the same time, the board would actually be represented at every site council meeting at least once this year because that's what you're doing, is representing not only yourself but the entire board when you go there, so.
So the bottom line on this section is get your, your preferences and requests into Dr. All or to Betty and we'll do what we can to put all those together.
If committee interests and this could at least come in, maybe before August 16th, we could come back at that special meeting and kind of give you a general draft of what it's starting to look like across these areas. That doesn't mean that there won't be additional things that come up or if we're not ready to take volunteers on something, we don't have to, but I'd like to have sort of a '07-'08 starting point and maybe it'll help for you to have a timeline on that, so thanks.
Good. Thank you. Hey, Ms. Wilhelm?
Just if we're still on 8.08, just recognition of the HR department. It, in looking at trying to find quality substitutes, and we have so, so many times that we're doing staff development in this district and recognizing for that staff development. It's, we put substitutes into our classrooms. So it's, it's refreshing to see that we're continuing to address those needs of the substitutes by looking at, trying to, trying to enhance what we can do for them. So, HR department, thank you for.
Mr. Parker?
Mr. Gilmore, can we go back to 7.07, the action to set special meetings? I noticed there that we had some other possible special meeting dates there. Do we want to set those this evening or discuss those this evening for the benefit of long-range planning for our schedules and calendars?
Thank you for bringing that up because I meant to do that. One of the things that's on there is a potential board workshop and we're looking at, there's actually two potential dates, the, the fourth Thursday in September as well as that October 16th date where we can have some time of focus on, like one thing we need to do is get back and revisit our board goals, which I think the last time we looked at them was in early part of '07. And we need to get back and revisit those and make sure we're prioritizing everything there appropriately and comfortable with that. You know, revisit our strategic directions, not to, not to revamp those, but to revisit them and then go with our board goals in light of that. That's something we like to accomplish. Dr. All and I have discussed to bringing in a National School Board Association facilitator to help us with that and also in, you know, board governance and, and process and board superintendent relationships. And those are some of the things that we're, we're talking about and I think that would be good. So I guess I would ask, do any of those, is October 16th or, do you have that September date handy, Dr. All?
I haven't my calendar, but the third Thursday? The third Thursday in September, you've already set, you know, at the, at the October meeting as your special meeting date for the month. And so that third Thursday right now would be open to do a Board of Education workshop. Then I've placed down there, just based on some conversation, the third Thursday in October is the 16th and like to get a little bit ahead on sort of the planning operationally, some operational, long-range strategic planning, both not only on revenue, but how we're going to operate our school district over the course of the next several years. And that would be a good financial planning meeting of October 16th. And then the other thing-
That's a Tuesday.
Okay. It should be the 18th. The third Thursday, the 18th. So September, third Thursday?
The 20th.
The 20th would be a good suggestion for a board workshop. And then Thursday, October 18th would be a suggestion for some long-range financial planning. And then also out there, and this is more complicated, is another joint city council school board meeting. And Mrs. Carpenter and staff at the city have been exchanging potential dates and we're eliminating weeks at a time here between city council members' schedules and our board meetings and the start of school. And so we're still working on that. And I would like to encourage, I just put this on for awareness, her to continue to work and maybe email you with some potential dates. If we establish the other two, which I think we have to go with our priority dates first for what we need to do, then once Mrs. Carpenter knows that, she can work with the city to try to find a couple of alternative times in this early fall to have that joint city council board meeting.
You know, I think we had all the best intentions in the world when we talked about trying to meet with the city twice a year. I just don't think that's going to be possible with, between trying to coordinate that, all the individuals in the council as well as ours. So we may be looking more at once a year, once every, you know, three quarters of a year or something like that. So I know we're already pretty far out there on the date so far in terms of conflicts from what I've seen.
We're into past October at this point.
So just keep aware of that when those emails come across, that we need to try to settle on something out there beyond October.
Is it possible on the 18, is it possible, I know we, the 16th on that Tuesday rather than the 18th in October, is that a date that you've, I know that's a date that we've tentatively set. That's a conflict for me because of conferences. So I don't know if-
Parent-teacher conferences.
The Tuesday works for me if it works for everyone else. That's so we go, so this, back to the 16?
It's a long way out there.
All right.
Thank you.
So we'll contemplate the 16th there.
16th of October?
Yes, 16th of October, Tuesday.
I would ask for consideration for six and see what the rest of the board thinks of that.
Six is fine. There's no objection. Okay, so we'll move towards that. We'll place that on a future action item.
Do we need to take action on those tonight or we?
We'll place it on a future action, maybe on the 16th.
Okay, okay, but we can just go ahead and put those on our, on our planners and plan on that.
I'd like to give Mr. Pollan an opportunity to weigh in on that too.
So we're the 20th and the 16th then?
Yes. All right. Anything else under section eight with future action items?
Gary has something.
Mr. Deener?
Yes, I'm sorry to interrupt. I was going during the time in which you made the, set the special meeting for the public hearing. I had that. Sorry.
The original documentation has that at 7:00. When I came in, I think I heard that you've set that at 6:00. Is that for the meeting or for the actual public hearing? You, you can have a meeting at 6:00 and do the public hearing at 7:00, but if, if you want the public hearing at 6:00, I, I do need to make that change, which is fine. It's easy to change.
Typically, what have we done on that?
It's, it's always been 7:00.
7:00 for the?
Public hearing.
Public hearing and the meeting at?
Sometimes the meeting starts early and they, they get other things done so that the last thing is the public hearing and then you finish. Other times, if it's the only thing you're doing is the public hearing, then probably that would be the time you set because that's the whole purpose of the meeting.
I'm certainly fine with 7:00.
Yeah.
So we begin the public hearing at 7:00 and follow with the meeting?
Well, the crucial part of that meeting is approving the budgets and that would typically follow the public hearing.
Do we, do we need to change that motion then?
Well, I was just looking at, Mr. Churchman made the motion and Ms. Ashley seconded it. If there's no objection with the folks who made the motion and there's no objection otherwise, I think we can just go with 7:00 unless somebody gives me other, other guidance says we need to do a formal motion again.
But if you want 6:00, I mean, I, that's easy for me to change. I mean, that's, I just need to reflect back.
Well, 7:00 is what we've traditionally done. I should have picked up on that, Gary, and I didn't. I know we've traditionally done it at 7:00. I think for the public, that's probably a better time than 6:00 PM.
Okay.
So if there's no objection, we'll just make that an amendment, that motion say 7:00 PM. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Okay.
Section nine, dealing with information, written reports. Is there any questions or comments regarding anything there? No questions or comments, then we'll move on to the last item before we come back and that's executive session. And I believe we should start with 60 minutes.
Mr. Gilmore, I move that we recess to executive session to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel, to protect the privacy rights of the individuals to be discussed and to consult with attorney on matters deemed privileged in attorney-client relationship, to protect attorney-client privilege in the public interest and to discuss matters relating to employer-employee negotiations, to protect the district's right to the confidentiality of its negotiating position and the public interest to return to regular session at 9:30 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Churchman. Is there a second? Second. Thank you, Mr. Parker and Mrs. Carpenter.
My question is, you probably didn't need negotiations in there. You still, okay. Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
The motion passes. We'll come back into public session at 9:30 PM. I'd like to call our meeting back to order and, Mrs. Carpenter, please let the record reflect that we've returned from executive session. We're going to take care of a couple of items of business and then we're going to go back into executive session for the same reasons that were previously motion for. So we'll need another motion when we get to that point, board members. We're going to revisit agenda item 2.03, which deals with official newspaper. We received information from-
Mr. Gilmore, do we, do we need to have a motion to go back into open session?
No. We're just returning to open session. 2.03 dealing with the official newspaper update and we received information from Mr. Mason and from Mr. Norris. For a statement for the record, we have established, according to what the statute, the Alathan News as our district paper for the purpose of notices and so forth. And one of our objectives, of course, is to be as, as open in communications as we possibly can. And with that in mind, without a formal action on the board unless someone feels differently, we're going to direct Dr. All to, and pursue other avenues by which to publish notices without actually designating another newspaper as an official paper of the district. And so with that, Dr. All, we're going to leave it in your hands to pursue those potential additional sources of public publications and to let us know what you're, what you do, what you decide. We need to return to items 7.04 and 7.05, so we'll take 7.04 first, which relates to a benefit district petition for Woodland Road improvements. Are there any questions or comments? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
I would move to authorize the signature of the petition for public improvements according to 7.04.
I second the motion.
It's been moved by Mr. Parker, seconded by Ms. Ashley. Mrs. Carpenter?
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
The motion passes. 7.05 is construction of a street, 115th Terrace at Woodland Road. Entertain a motion of that item.
I move that we approve construction of 115th Terrace Street privately with a cost shared equally with the seller.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Ashley, seconded by Mr. Churchman. Any further discussion? Mrs. Carpenter?
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
And the motion passes. We will need to entertain another motion for executive session and I would recommend we do for 30 minutes to 10 after 10. If someone will make that motion, please.
Mr. Gilmore, I move that we return to executive session for 30 minutes to return at 10:10 PM.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Mrs. Carpenter?
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
And we're adjourned to executive session till 10:10.